Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved to go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the city's attorneys and the city council regarding litigation involving the following parties: the estate of Joseph Lopez, Matthew Hamilton, Polika Hairston, Dow Chemicals, and Modeste Chakua. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Thur, all in favor say aye. Aye, and that passes unanimously. We will be back at 5:30 for our regular meeting.
Thank you very much, and welcome to the Greensboro Coliseum. You can hear our birds are chirping today, so it's an exciting day in the Greensboro Coliseum for this special announcement. Many of you have experienced memorable and remarkable moments in this building. And many of you or your families will see new and exciting moments in the future as this building is launched into a new era under Oakview Group Management. On July 1st, the City of Greensboro and City Council made a historic change to private management. And that is just the beginning of positive change for our operation. I think it's also important to realize that virtually everyone you know, virtually everyone in the triad or surrounding counties, have had some interaction with the Coliseum, be it an event or other things. And there's that connection with our community that's an important piece of this puzzle. Whether that interaction was a high school or college graduation, you attended an ACC tournament or basketball game, a hockey game back when we had hockey, other ice skating events like the United States Figure Skating Championships. Everyone has a connection to the Greensboro Coliseum. Could also be Monster Truck Jam or Walt Disney's World on Ice. There's a lot of different options. And that's what makes Greensboro a special place to gather, Greensboro Coliseum, a special place to gather with friends and family. Our history of events, along with our reputation for excellent customer service and high quality of live entertainment events, is what leads us to today's historic announcement. I'd like to introduce the folks on the stage with me. Mayor Nancy Vaughn to my left. Todd Williams, who is Market President of First Horizon Bank. And Doug Higgins, who is Senior Vice President of OVG Facilities. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the mayor to make our announcement.
Good morning. It is so, so fun to be here for this historic announcement. And I do want to recognize my councilmember colleagues, Zach Matheny, Hugh Holston, Mary Kay Abuziweider, Goldie Wells, and Sharon Hightower. We have all been very active in things that have gone on in the Greensboro Coliseum. We are very excited for the future of the Coliseum under private management. A lot of people have asked, well, we see changes when, when there is the, the change to private management. Quite frankly, I think the change has been seamless. Anybody who went to a concert or an event in May and then went to one maybe in July or August, didn't notice any difference, which was wonderful and was what we wanted. But today you are going to notice a difference. This is really a decision that was 60 years in the making. And one group of people that are going to find this decision exceptionally interesting will be the City of Greensboro taxpayers. This is an amazing building, and it is a magnet for people across the state and across the region to come in and see great concerts, sporting events right here in this facility. But it's the City of Greensboro, it's our taxpayers who pay for this facility and pay for the upkeep. Well, now we're going to have a corporate partner who is going to help us with that by making a significant investment in this Coliseum, which will take some of the pressure off of the city's taxpayers. So that is really when people say, well, what's the big deal? What's in it for me? Well, that's what's in it for you. And this is just one of many announcements that are coming. Today's announcement is a prime example of the benefits of the Oakview Group Management and their capabilities. I'm thrilled to announce that for the first time in our 65-year history of this incredible facility, that we have naming rights for the Coliseum. The Greensboro Coliseum and First Horizon Bank have reached a long-term naming rights agreement. And the Coliseum will now be known as, do you have a drum roll or anything? First Horizon Coliseum. I want to say a big thank you to First Horizon for being an investment in the Coliseum and the City of Greensboro. Thank you so much. And thank you for helping us meet this milestone. This was one of the three bullet points that we gave OVG that we really wanted to see happen quickly. And considering that they just took over in July 1st, and here we are with that first bullet point, they can check right off. I want to say thank you to OVG for your hard work making this, making this happen. And so I am going to turn this over to, to Todd Williams.
Thank you, Mayor Vaughn, and thanks everyone for being here today. Good morning. My name is Todd Williams, and I am the Triad Market President for First Horizon Bank. Before we begin, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the strife and hard times of our friends across the southeast, but especially our friends and colleagues in western North Carolina. Many have planned to join us today as part of our team and are unable to be here for all the hard times they're experiencing. So we will continue to remember them in our thoughts and prayers and would hope that you would do the same as our bank continues to support those in need. I've been a proud resident of North Carolina most of my life and a proud resident of Greensboro and a taxpayer for the last 10 years. And those are two of many of the reasons I'm thrilled to be the first person to welcome you to First Horizon Coliseum. We are honored to have our name on this iconic venue. I remember as a school kid in North Carolina watching many ACC tournaments in this iconic venue and look forward to seeing that again. This Coliseum is a symbol of First Horizon's commitment to Greensboro and North Carolina. And none of this will be possible without our big bank hustle and small bank muscle. That's what we call our winning combination. Our vision and resources fill this opportunity, but it is the heart and passion we feel for this community that brought it to life. With this new partnership, First Horizon Bank aims to raise the ability of both our brand, our community, and the Coliseum, and build upon our reputation as a community-focused bank. For over 160 years, First Horizon Bank has been committed to serving our communities. As we know, we are only as strong as the communities in which we live, serve, and work. What better way to serve Greensboro than meet them at a place they've gathered for over 65 years? From concerts to sporting events to graduations, the Coliseum is a reflection of our entire community and its passions. We believe this partnership will help the Coliseum, its visitors, and our current and future clients find new horizons. I would be remiss if I did not introduce three of my First Horizon colleagues in attendance, well, two are in attendance today that have helped so much in this process. One who's not here is Sam Irwin, our President of Regional Banking. He's actually in the western part of the state, helping out some associates. Laura Bunn, our Regional President for the Mid-Atlantic, thank you so much. And lastly, Paula Bill from Memphis, our Director of Brand Strategy, has been instrumental in this process and as we've worked through months of hard work. So thank you so much for helping this come to fruition and for all your hard work. On behalf of myself and the entire First Horizon Bank team, we are proud to continue to be a fixture in this community and look forward to leveraging our partnership with the First Horizon Coliseum for many years to come. Thank you.
So the addition of a naming rights partner greatly enhances the Coliseum's profile and appeal on a national level. Our other goals with OVG remain attainable in the near future. And I'm pleased to introduce Doug Higgins with, as a Senior Vice President of Oakview Group Facilities, who's going to speak on their behalf.
Good morning. I am very excited to be in Greensboro today for this announcement. With apologies, our, our market or division president Greg Odell was supposed to be here. He had some flight issues, so I'm pinch hitting in instead and had flight issues myself and ended up driving from Virginia Beach early this morning. So glad to be here. Most importantly, we're excited about Greensboro. As the mayor mentioned, it's really a perfect situation, taking the largest company in the facility management industry with what we view as the premier facilities in the United States. The ability for Oakview to come in and be a true partner to a city like Greensboro is what attracted us. As the mayor mentioned, when we started having discussions with the city, we together had a number of initiatives that we wanted to come in and hit the ground running. The first initiative for us was to have a smooth transition of over 1,000 employees from city employment to Oakview employment. That happened on July 1st, and we couldn't be more proud of that. So a round of applause to our employees who have done that. And that's important, as the mayor mentioned, the people that came to the facility of the First Horizon Coliseum in May and then came back here July, August, and September, did not notice a difference in the service that they received. They just noticed the smiling, friendly attitudes of all the people here at the Coliseum. So that's really important to us, and that was the most important initiative that we had. We had three other initiatives that we talked to City Council about early on. We talked about naming rights. We had a conversation with City Council that we felt as though in year two, we could have a naming rights partner. We're three months into our relationship and we're announcing the First Horizon Coliseum, so we're excited about that. Our second initiative was to have a major professional sports franchise here in Greensboro. We're still working on that, and we hope to have some announcements to that initiative in the future as well. And our third initiative for both the Coliseum and the Tanger Center is to raise the profile of shows. And we're already going to work with that, and I think our Stevie Wonder announcement that we had two weeks ago is the first step in that direction. So you'll continue to see larger, greater, and bigger events in this facility, not just at the First Horizon Coliseum, but at the Tanger Center and the seven other facilities that were involved in. So we couldn't be more proud of our partnership, and we think today is the first step in that longstanding relationship that we're going to have with all of you. So please, welcome to the First Horizon Coliseum. I want to thank very specifically our team that worked on this deal, Derek Goldfarb and Mike Mitchell. From the day we got going, started beating the ground, making the phone calls necessary, developed a relationship with Todd and their team, and it was instantaneous, partnership is the word I keep using. And we will work together with First Horizon to be out in the community, to be stewards of Greensboro and the surrounding areas. We look forward to the success of the First Horizon Coliseum moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for being here with us this afternoon. We are kicking off a very big weekend in the world of professional bull riding and in the franchise of the Carolina Cowboys. First things first, I'm Matt West representing the PBR. It's an honor to be back here at City Hall. It's exciting to be back in Greensboro. Things are a little different this time around. The team is on an incredible journey this season. They have had just an unbelievable first nine weeks. They come into their home stand for the very first time as the number one team in the league. They've logged on. They've got not one, but two perfect games already this season, and I have a feeling that there are more to come before they eventually try to bring that title right back here to North Carolina. Now, this weekend is going to play an integral role in them continuing their journey to be regular season champs and ultimately teams champions. As a matter of fact, tomorrow night is highlighted by the number one team, Carolina Cowboys, taking on the number two team in the league. And so obviously, that's a big way to kick off the weekend. Weekend doesn't get any easier for the guys, but we know that after what we've seen the first nine weeks, they're certainly pumped and ready to express and show their appreciation for their home stand, for their home fans, and to bring the talent that the rest of the world has seen, bring it back home here this weekend. That being said, a lot of things to get to today. First thing is, when the team relocated here to Greensboro last January, Mayor Greens Bull was renamed in honor of Mayor Vaughn and the team's new home in Greensboro. So let me officially introduce today Mayor Greens Bull. I can talk a lot about the team. I can talk a lot about how this journey began a few years ago, but there's a lot of very integral reasons that this has become such a successful franchise, and it all starts at the top. And with that, I'd like to introduce you to the owner of the Carolina Cowboys. Please welcome Mr. Richard Childress.
Thank you, Matt. It's great to be here in Greensboro. Man, I can't believe it's been a year, but we're back, we're fired up, we've got a great team this year. I have to thank Mayor Vaughn, she's here, she's going to come up, for helping us get this moved over to Greensboro. We were in Winston, that Coliseum was a little too small. Here we are, and we're going to fill it up with our fans that's coming out here to see the PBR Bull Riding Teams Event. The Carolina Cowboys, my grandson Austin Dillon, he's the general manager. And I said, Austin, if I do this, will you take and run it for me? He did, and he's done a fantastic job. We got some talent. I'm going to let him introduce each one of these guys. We've got seven-time champion champions, we've got veterans, we've got some great, great talent back here. We've got some young talent that's just coming out, rookies. But that's what it takes, is a special group, and he's put together that special group. And the big bull back here, Mayor Vaughn, our Greens Bull, right here it is for you. So maybe somebody will get to ride that thing. So thank you all, and thank everyone. Remember, it's this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday over in Greensboro Coliseum. You're going to see one heck of a show, the greatest eight seconds you'll ever see in any sport. You'll see it coming up Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday. So thank you all for being here. Austin Dillon or Matt? Austin Dillon, my grandson, come over here and introduce all of you guys.
Well, thanks everybody for coming out. Man, for me, last year, this was a great event, bringing the Cowboys to Greensboro. I really appreciate the support from all the media. You know, we want to make this event the best event of the year for the PBR teams. And it's pretty cool for Greensboro to have a professional sports team like the Carolina Cowboys. There's a lot of big cities across the United States that we visit during our season. And this is our weekend to show out for all those other teams. And we really just want to come out, fill up the Greensboro Coliseum and put on a good show and, and show them that we're here to defend our turf. You know, this is our home stand. So when you come to the events, I always hear Matt say, you know, over the loudspeaker, when your team's riding is a little different than football, you want to be screaming loud when we're out there getting ready to ride. It gets those guys fired up, and we've got a heck of a team, and I'll talk about some of the guys right now. And starting from the newest addition right here is Trey Benton. We just added him to our team, we're really excited to have him on. Trey, I think, is a seven-time NFR qualifier, is that right? Yep, so he's been here and done that and, and put on some ranked rides. Right beside him, Sage Kimsey, seven-time NFR champion, gold buckle winner. Sage has been a huge part of our team to be at where we're at right now, which is number one in the league. We ask a lot out of Sage, and he's done a great job for us and been a leader in our locker room. Gabriel Marias is from Brazil. He's an up-and-coming rider for us, and he's doing a great job. Got on last night at Jerome's House in Archdale and rode a bull, great ride. One of our coaches, Robson Palermo. We, we brought Robson on this past year, and he's been huge again for our locker room because a lot of people don't know, a great majority of the riders are from Brazil. And Robson has come in here and done a lot of great things for us. And he's a PBR three-time World Finals Champion. So he's, he's done a lot in his own right. And Adriano Salgado, he came on our team this year. Was really pumped to have Adriano, got him in the offseason. Started off the year with a 93-point ride, and that is the highest right now in PBR. So he's leading the league with the highest score at a 93 on a bull called Flying Wired. Dalen Swearingen, also a PBR World Champion, gold buckle winner in 2021? 22, that was close, so 2022. And man, Dalen's young stud in locker room, we really enjoyed having him a part of our team. Right beside him, Dawson Branton, been a part of our team for two years now. Dawson got a couple bulls rode just a couple weeks ago, been awesome. Another addition, Derek Kolbaba. Derek came from another team where he was the closer for that team, and he's been great for our locker room, riding a lot of bulls. Rode two last week out in Anaheim, California, that's where we were just, just last weekend. Ethan Winkler was our first pick this year in the draft. He's, we like to say he's 18 going on 16, but we're really working hard with Ethan. He's been crushing it, had a great bull ride last night, and he also won a bonus round for us this year. So been, been great to have Ethan Winkler. And then finally, Cooper Davis, one of our original standing members. Also a PBR World Champion, Champion Leader in the Locker Room. And it's been great to work with these guys and really pumped for where we're at right now. And would love to have all the support of all of Greensboro this weekend to help us bring it home at home. And it can really set us apart going into Vegas, which is where our finals are. So we got three games this weekend, and like Matt said, we're playing Kansas City Friday night, and we want to show them, show them what the Blue Nation's a little bit about. So thank you guys for coming out, and I'm going to hand it back over to Matt. And got to thank Jerome and Tiffany, all of our staff for the Carolina Cowboys, John Schumate, Dakota, JD, who, if you follow us on Instagram, we have a really good Instagram, and JD does our videos and puts out some fire. So we're really proud of, of him and all of our team, so thank you guys.
All in all, we all know that RCR has built an incredible legacy in automobile racing, but they have continued that legacy. In this group of guys, there are 10 world titles, there are six World Finals Championships, and there are what I believe to be numerous teams championships in the future. And that starts here this weekend to pick up that first one. That being said, obviously, we are, we are here on her turf today. So at this time, I'd like to welcome Mayor Vaughn.
Good afternoon. It is my pleasure to be here to welcome back the Carolina Cowboys. We had so much fun at the Coliseum last year. I want to encourage anybody who's listening to this, if you want to come out and have some family fun, see some quick, great action, come on out to the Coliseum this weekend. You won't be disappointed. I understand that we were second when it came to the, the most people who showed up at these championships, only to Nashville. So come on, let's crush Nashville this weekend, okay? Let's get everybody to Greensboro and let's be number one this time. I absolutely enjoyed the last time they were here, and I've enjoyed learning so much about professional bull riding. It's something that I never thought that I would be interested in, but I'll tell you, it is just so much fun. So it is my pleasure to declare this weekend the Carolina Cowboy Days. So I, I just want to read a little bit about this. Whereas the Carolina Cowboys, the triad's first and only profession, and the best, only professional bull riding team, we are attempting to make history in 2024, bringing the Tar Heel State its next sporting world title. They are returning to Greensboro and to the Greensboro Coliseum, a key stepping stone on that journey on September 20th through the 22nd for their third annual Cowboy Days home stand. Whereas the Carolina Cowboys are amid a historic season, firmly etching their names in the PBR Team League record books. Not only did the Cowboys begin the season with an unprecedented 11-game unbeaten streak, they have logged two perfect games to date, a feat never achieved by any other team in the league. It goes on from there. But it is my pleasure as mayor to be able to declare September 22nd, 20th through the 22nd as Carolina Cowboy Days. And you know, if you see any of these Cowboys out and around, make sure that they know that they are, we are happy that they are here in Greensboro. And we know that they are bringing in so many visitors from throughout the state of North Carolina and beyond. We want to make sure that everybody knows that we are the home of the Carolina Cowboys. Thank you.
These guys go every weekend, you know, just putting it all on the line, and they do it for this state and for this town. And you know, this, everywhere we go, they talk about Greensboro, and that's the team that we're behind. And, and man, our guys, Greensboro has got the number one team. I don't know if y'all really... I don't know if y'all really realize what y'all've got, because we travel all over the United States every weekend, and, man, they just put it on the line for Greensboro. And they're going to bring it right here this weekend, and you can believe they're going to hold their ground rolling through the weekend. So y'all come out and support us this weekend, you can believe our guys are going to come with it. They're pumped and ready to go. It's going to be a big week in Greensboro this weekend.
Thank you, Jerome. To Mayor Vaughn's point, Nashville did set a record earlier this season, but they don't have the number-one team in the league, and you do. So I expect that record to be broken here this weekend. Again, on behalf of everybody at the PBR's Camping World Team Series, everybody at the Professional Bull Riders for the Carolina Cowboys, one more time, I know we're at a formal press conference, but let's have a little fun. How about a big round of applause for the number-one team in the world? It all kicks off tomorrow night inside the Coliseum, Saturday night, and then Sunday afternoon, and they'll look to make a clean sweep and go 3-0 with all of your help here this weekend. So thank you so much. We'll see you all this weekend.
Welcome to Gate City Insider. I'm Rosemary Plyman. Today is all about the arts. We are diving into all the exciting things happening with Creative Greensboro this year. And starting with Jackie Boone, always exciting, the city's chief creative economy officer. Hello and welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm happy to be here.
We're so glad to have you. Okay, you've been with the city now a little over a year. What are the state of the arts in Greensboro?
Well, I said it before, and I'll continue to say it, I think that Greensboro is really on the cusp of a renaissance here. The arts here are thriving, they're doing well. I'm watching small organizations, small creatives, their small festivals are blossoming and growing. This economy generates more than $236 million just in Greensboro, and it tells me a couple of things. A, we are an economic driver, and then B, people are really invested into the arts in Greensboro. So people want more, and I want to continue to support the arts and to continue to give people what they want.
Okay, so tell us how Creative Greensboro fits into that. What is Creative Greensboro?
So Creative Greensboro, we are the only city office that has its own name. So we are the city's Office of Art and Culture. Creative Greensboro is the city's Office for Arts and Culture. We provide supports to organizations, creative individuals, by providing opportunities, residencies, grants, performing arts opportunities within the cultural center and within communities.
How can we plug into the great things happening with Creative Greensboro?
You can plug into Creative Greensboro in a multitude of ways. You can come on over to the Greensboro Cultural Center, 200 North Davy Street. We have a multitude of opportunities and experiences happening there, ranging from visual arts exhibitions, theater performance shows, music performances, or you can check into one of your local communities and ask if there's a resident artist. If there's not, contact us, and we'll make sure to get one.
It's so much fun. Okay, so what is the cost to participate, or to watch, or to learn?
The best thing about Creative Greensboro and our programming, it's free or low cost for everyone.
Love to hear that. And we're talking about music, dance, theater, visual arts.
Every genre, every discipline, every background. We have something for every age.
Oh, that's important, too. Yeah, so like, from the smallest children to the older adults.
From the smallest to the oldest. We have something for everybody. We're actually in the process of creating some more programming for our tween and teen population.
That's good.
We've been hearing a lot, we've been hearing a lot that parents want something, more activities for their kids to participate in. So we've been cooking, we've been listening, so we're about to ramp up and announce some new amazing opportunities.
Okay, we'll be looking forward to hearing more about that. And also, there's some intergenerational things. So there's opportunities to kind of cross barriers from age and backgrounds and all of that, too.
Yes, so I will let my team talk about what they have to offer, but I could, off the top of my head, I'm thinking of our music ensemble experiences. We have people who are part of our ensembles. We have four amazing ensembles. Anybody can join ages 18 to 80, literally. We have people in our music ensembles spanning those age ranges. For our theater, our theater performances, our drama programming, the same thing. We have experiences for 8 to 80. You can be in a play with your child. It's a really cool and unique experience that I don't think anybody else in the city is offering. So I'm really excited about the opportunities and access that we're able to provide to all people in Greensboro.
Access because free or low cost. So how are all these programs funded?
So we actually are a part of the city's budget, but we do have generous supporters who come to our events and they donate, which we are so grateful for, because without those supports, we could not do all of the amazing programming that we do, and we are supported by the North Carolina Arts, State Arts Council.
What is your favorite thing about this work?
There are three things I think of: opportunities, access, and connectivity. We are providing opportunities for artists, individuals, creative organizations. We're providing access for all within community and within the cultural center in downtown. And then connectivity. We're able to connect people, communities, and art in an amazing way. So I just have a really fun job.
Yeah, you do. Are you an artist?
I am.
Okay, in what discipline?
I am a writer, I'm a filmmaker, but these days, I'm spending most of my time really helping facilitate supports for others, and I'm really getting some fulfillment out of that.
But you understand what it takes to come from as an artist, too, and what it means to have these programs available.
Absolutely.
All right, so we're going to dive into a whole lot more about that. First, let me tell you, if you want to know more about what's happening with Creative Greensboro, Arts in Greensboro, it's an easy website, creativegreensboro.com will get you right where you need to go. All right, so when we come back, we're going to talk about theater. There will be drama, yes, for the 56th season in Greensboro, coming up right after this Welcome back to Gate City Insider. We have to be serious for a moment, because there is drama in Greensboro, and I'm talking a whole lot of drama. In fact, we couldn't be happier about it. Todd Fisher is performing arts coordinator for Creative Greensboro, where we are celebrating 56 years of theater in Greensboro. That's amazing.
That is amazing, absolutely.
And how long have you been with Creative Greensboro?
Since 2008, so a little bit of time, yeah.
Yeah, a little bit of time, for sure. So what is Greensboro doing right that we keep, that we've had this long history of theater here?
I would say opportunity, you know, and especially with our program, you know, it's process over product. So, you know, we're training folks to be successful no matter what program they go into. So it's a little bit more relaxed atmosphere. And just, people love to go out and support theater in Greensboro. So, you know, we were just talking about how we had friends, mutual friends that were in this show or that show, so the community really goes around and goes out to see each other's work. So it's sustainable that way.
When we talk about Greensboro's drama program, is it children, is it adults, is it everybody?
It's all ages, yeah. We do start kids out young with a fun partnership program called Short Tales. We partner with UNCG's Theater Education BFA Program. We bring them over so they get to work with real-life kids. Everybody that auditions gets into that show, which you won't find too many places, so a lot of times, it's their first opportunity. And now I have those same kids doing Shakespeare in A Midsummer Halloween Nightmare, and they're like, "Wait, there's more than 10 pages to a script?" I'm like, "Yes, there is." So, and then they just kind of go from there. And then, you know, we have our playwriting program, which starts at 16 and goes up to all ages, and then we expand out from there. So we do have Theater for Youth program from 7 to 18, and then our, most of our adult programming is focused based off of the Greensboro Playwrights Forum. So it's exciting, and it's open for everybody to participate.
Tell us a little bit about this 56th season.
Yeah, so it's serendipitous to a certain extent that everything is inspired by William Shakespeare. So it started off with our new play project, La Muria by Bonnie Antash. It is about lemurs, and it takes place in a fictionalized version of the Duke Lemur Center, which I didn't know existed. It is one of the top research facilities for lemurs in all of the country. So she fictionalized that, and then the characters are named after characters in King Lear. So I won't get into that story too much, but, so even the lemurs are named after characters in King Lear. So there was the first bit of Shakespeare, and then we partner with an awesome local Shakespeare company called Shared Radiance, and they help us with our Teen Shakespeare Show. And in that discussion on deciding what to do, they wanted to do Twelfth Night, and we talked about doing Twelfth Night the Musical by Shayna Tob. She just won two Tonys for Best Book and Best Lyrics, and we'll be the first theater company to do her musical Twelfth Night in North Carolina this summer. So when all those things fell into place, I was like, "All right, let's just go for it." So it's all inspired by Shakespeare. It should be fun, but, you know, it's not always coming to see just a Shakespeare show. You'll see some mix-ups and some inspirations and some different things. Even our playwrights are like renaming some characters in their short plays like after Shakespeare characters, so it should be fun.
A lot of this is, I hear you saying this, about growing. It's like, growing as an actor, growing as a playwright, growing, you know, as maybe backstage learning, you know, technical theater, too.
Absolutely.
And you were talking about a show you're working on now where you actually were writing it around actual people who are already cast, and that's not usually the way things happen. I mean, so it really is, it really is tailored to, it's really about the people, even more than the play.
Yeah, Jackie and I like to talk about our program as workforce training. So we're one of the few organizations where we train volunteers in technical theater as well as, you know, playwriting, et cetera. So you really can get a well-rounded theatrical experience by participating, and it's absolutely free to participate.
Okay, that was my next question. All right, free to participate? No cost to audition?
No cost to audition, no cost to participate. So anyone can come and participate in any of our programs and, you know, try it out and see if they want to be an actor, a playwright, a lighting designer, a costume designer, or a set painter.
So there are opportunities, even if you're not the one who wants to be onstage. I'm a backstage mom myself.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we, you know, and we try to, we force our actors to come out to the scene shop and help build the sets. We know it's part of a well-rounded theater education, and they get a real perspective on how these things work, like how much time it actually takes outside of rehearsal to put a whole production together. A lot of them, they go see a show, and they're like, "Oh, that was great," but they don't see the behind-the-scenes, which is a lot of time, a lot of investment, and also art as well.
Yeah, so, and theater is very much a woo, a ride, right? Like, I mean, you're just so busy, and then, and then a show is over, and there's this huh, you know, relief and also sadness that comes with it. And then you build up for another one. How do you keep going with this?
Oh, yeah, you know, I've been doing this since I'm 15, so it's a long time. So you do get used to that pattern a little bit, but for me, what helps is that you do have something on the horizon or a perspective, something to look forward to, even if it's just reflecting on, you know, the process in the past. And that's what I tell my kids, it's like, yes, you will feel a little bit of sadness on Monday, but you will have the next opportunity to look forward to, and so it kind of keeps you going that way. So, but it's also nice to catch up on a little bit of sleep after working a 100-hour tech week and show week.
Yes, 100%. Well, thank you for everything you're doing. We're looking forward to a season of Shakespeare and Shakespeareesque type things as they come, as it may be. So you can support Creative Greensboro and the theater program by going to an audition, by working backstage, or just going to see a show, and you can find out more about what's coming up, always keeping something on the horizon, by going to creativegreensboro.com. Welcome back. Our creative juices are really flowing today. Our friends from Creative Greensboro are here sharing all the good things that are happening. Meredith Cortez is music and operations specialist, and she's going to share more about the music that is coming up this season with Creative Greensboro. Hello and welcome.
Hello, thank you so much.
We're so glad you're here. So what brought you to Creative Greensboro?
Well, I actually came to Creative Greensboro before it was Creative Greensboro. I've been, I've been here since 2017, and the timing was great for me. My youngest child was going off to college, so it was time to slide myself back into something that, outside of being home with my kids. And my kids had come to programming at the Cultural Center back when they were young, and it resonated with me as this is a place that I would really like to be a part of. So a position came open, and I applied, and...
Do you have musicians in the family? Are you musically inclined?
I am musically inclined, yes. I play piano, flute, and sing.
Okay, yes, then.
And I've got one and a half kids that are musically inclined. One is definitely a great singer and has done community theater. My youngest is a dancer, so I'll give her that, close enough to, close enough to music.
Yeah, yeah, she's got the beat, for sure. And you understand what artists are looking for, musicians need, and some of the support they need, and you also understand it from a parent perspective, which is super helpful. You have a lot of concerts coming up this fall. Tell us about some of those.
Sure, we've got four city ensembles. We've got the Greensboro Concert Band, the Choral Society of Greensboro, the Philharmonie of Greensboro, and the Greensboro Big Band, all who just started back to rehearsals in September, and they've each got one or two concerts coming up this fall. The first concert is going to be November 2nd with the Choral Society of Greensboro. They'll be performing out at the Wellspring Theater. And then we've got pretty steadily concerts on weekends all throughout November and even into December, culminating with December 10th, the Messiah Concert, that's been an annual tradition in Greensboro for many years.
And what is the cost to attend these concerts?
They are free. They are free. Come on out. Yes, we do take donations to help offset the costs, but yeah, they are, they are all free.
So tell us about the musicians, young, older, everywhere in between, and what kind of experiences do they have?
Yes, we've got musicians probably as young as 14, 15, all the way up to 86, I believe, is our oldest musician. And they range from high school students with, you know, limited school experience all the way up to semi-professional musicians that are looking for an outlet to play in.
And so some really wonderful musicians, obviously, to hear. And are there opportunities to join them if you're a musician here, here watching?
Yes, registration is closed for three of the groups, but the Messiah Concert that's coming up on December 10th, we have not started rehearsals for that yet, so if you're a singer that enjoys Messiah and wants to participate in that way, registration is open now. You'll find it on our website at creativegreensboro.com, and those rehearsals will start in mid-November.
And looking ahead, when are registrations? When does that usually happen in the year?
Yep, the next round of registrations for all the ensembles will probably open up middle of December, maybe, for the spring semester.
Okay, and so what do you love most about this job, about this work?
Well, I love it, just because it's the, I am a musician at heart. That was what I wanted to do with my life, and so I just love being in the environment. I played in the band, I sang in a chorus, I've done all these things myself, and so I'm just a strong advocate for those who want to consider and continue participating in that way.
And I think one of the most fun things about just even when you walk through the Cultural Arts Center, even if you don't have a destination inside the building, to just walk through, you'll often hear people rehearsing, music wafting through the halls and from all the different corners, even sometimes people sitting in the hallways just practicing.
Yes, I remember when I came through with my kids when they were little and taking class, classes over there, that's what drew me, you know, I came into the building, and I'm like, "Oh, this is, these are my people."
These are my people, yeah, I like that. I think a lot of people feel that way. Well, thank you for spending a little time with us, really appreciate it. And you can find the full schedule, all the concerts and registrations and everything upcoming with That Is Musical with Creative Greensboro. You know the website by now, creativegreensboro.com is the place to go. And if you're feeling a little bit more creative, you want to find a new way to be creative, we're going to talk about how you can do that at the Cultural Arts Center right after We are back with all things creative in Greensboro: visual art, drama, music, anything that just makes you think or makes you feel. Peter Novasad and Naomi Woods are with Creative Greensboro, and they bring art into the Cultural Arts Center in different ways. Hello, welcome.
Hi, thanks for having me.
So glad to have you. Okay, Naomi, let's start with you. Tell us about the GROW residency.
Sure, so GROW is the Greensboro residency for original works. We are just about to wrap up with our 2024 residence, so Sasha Woods is having her residency right now, and then Latony Crumbs is going to be having a residency in November and December. And then coming up soon in November, we'll be announcing the residency cycle for 2025. So these are residencies of all different disciplines: visual arts, music, spoken word, theater, and all of these residencies are going to be between one week and 12 weeks, where the resident can take up the space however they want. They'll be working on an original creative project, and they'll also be putting on public engagement opportunities for the community to come in, experience their work, make something new themselves, and learn something about the artistic discipline.
So how do artists apply, and how are they chosen?
So the application is going to be open every fall, and artists can submit a proposal for their residency. We're just about to announce the... for their residency. We're just about to announce the artists for our 2025 cycle. But artists who are just learning about this right now can look out for next fall when the application opens up again.
And you talked about there's opportunities for the public to be involved. How do we find out about those kinds of things?
Absolutely. So what makes GROW so unique as an artist residency is the public engagement component. So artists are required to put on at least six hours of absolutely free public programming every week during their residency. Sometimes that's workshops, sometimes it's open studios, sometimes there's performances going on. And all of that is posted on our website at creativegreensborough.com.
We know it well. All right, let's talk with you, Peter, a little bit. Let's talk about the Van Dyke Space, because there's some really neat things happening there. Tell us about that.
Yeah, the Van Dyke Performance Space offers low-cost access to space to a variety of creative individuals and organizations from around Guilford County and from further around. So we have candlelight concerts coming up, dance recitals. We work with our music department to host their concerts. And so there are a variety of things coming up. You can view them at creativegreensborough.com or on the Arts Council website. But yeah.
So really, you just, you just, if you're an outside organization and you want to use this space, you just get in touch with Creative Greensboro and make that happen?
Absolutely. The Van Dyke Performance Space is a public performance space. So all you really need to do is be a creative, have a creative idea and want to put on a show. And you can go to creativegreensborough.libcal.com. It's library calendar shortened. But you can make a reservation, anybody can. It's very low cost. Yeah. And so we help a variety of people put on and make their event special.
Yeah. Okay. So tell us about the space for those who haven't been in it.
Yeah, it's a 311-seat black box theater. We have a sprung wood dance floor stage. And yeah, it's...
And you can, and you'll be there to help them some too, because that's the thing too. I know, people, how do I do this? What, you know, how's this going to work?
Absolutely. I'm there to guide people through the process and help them, you know, organize the technical and, you know, logistical aspects of putting on an event. And so I'm there to help people, you know, make their event dream reality and hopefully, you know, get a huge audience and, you know, have a super successful event.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. So we're hearing about outside agencies coming in. And there are other ways that if you have to bring in your group and use the Cultural Arts Center. Tell us about that, Naomi.
Absolutely. So we have a bunch of space throughout the Cultural Center of just dance studios, rehearsal spaces, art classrooms, that anybody from the public, an artist or an arts organization, can rent at an hourly rate for a very, very low cost. So we have members of the public who come in and hold weekly dance classes or weekly music classes. And we're actually helping these artists to build their platform and their business as small business owners.
That's a really good, it's a, it's a resource that, I mean, I know lots of you have probably visited the Cultural Arts Center for a class or for a performance, but there's just always something happening there. And there's always room for more, is really what you're saying. You want to keep bringing that stuff in. Have to give a shout out to these two because they both graduated from Weaver Academy, so Greensboro raised. And we're glad that you found a place to stay in the arts in Greensboro.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's just a good place for the arts?
I think so. That's what really attracted me to this job is, you know, growing up in and around the Cultural Center and seeing how huge of an impact it has on people's lives. So I definitely had to get in on the action. It's a huge hub for the city's culture and arts.
I love it. I love it. Well, thank you both for being here. Thanks for everything that you are doing. Once again, more to find out, creativegreensborough.com is your landing spot. And you can find out more about the rentals, about the events, it's all happening, and the GROW residency, all happening right there. And there's more. How about art in your neighborhood? That's up next. Welcome back to Gate City Insider. There is a lot of art happening in Greensboro. And so far today, we've been talking about art happening really around the Cultural Arts Center. There's so much happening in that hub of art activity with Creative Greensboro. But art is not limited to that center. It's not even limited to downtown Greensboro or the surrounding neighborhoods. Art is going everywhere in Greensboro, and that is the point. Karen Arteja is with Creative Greensboro. Tell us about bringing it to a neighborhood near you. Hello and welcome.
Hello, great to be here.
It's so good to have you. Okay, how is art going out into our neighborhoods? How are you doing that?
Well, you know, my biggest program is called Neighborhood Arts. And it encompasses five neighborhoods across the city. Dudley Heights, Glenwood, Kings Forest, Mill District, and Random Woods. So with this nice cooler weather, one of the things people can do is if they're wanting to play some basketball or spend some time in our public parks, we've got lovely, community-led, artist-led art projects that are in parks in Glenwood. There's a basketball court mural. Kings Forest, there's a basketball court mural. In Random Woods, there's a mural as well. We also have art on the picnic tables in Random Woods and Kings Forest. And all of these projects were created in partnership between local artists and the residents of the community. So they're, they're meaningful pieces of art that really elevate the voices of the community.
And so how does this get started? And how do you choose a neighborhood? How do you choose an artist? How do you kind of really get the ball rolling and to go from, you know, idea to actually a mural at a basketball court?
Well, what we did was we chose the five neighborhoods that are part of the Greensboro GSO Housing Plan. So those are neighborhoods that we're, as a city, reinvesting in. And so we invited the neighborhood residents to actually choose artists that they wanted to invite into their communities. And they worked together, shared labor, shared ideas, shared visioning, and brought these projects to life.
When these projects come to life, how do you see it transform a neighborhood? How do you see it lift up the people?
Yeah. Well, like in Kings Forest, there are 11 sidewalk murals. So if you're out walking around Kings Forest, you know, enjoying your exercise, you're going to see sidewalk icons that honor residents of the community, and also affirmation statements like Believe in Yourself, Thrive. So it really brings people out to enjoy their, their parks around the city. And it's, and it's meaningful art.
So what are some things that have inspired you through this work?
Oh, wow. Well, you know, Neighborhood Arts is about connecting communities and creativity. And so I'm a visual artist as well, but I'm also very community-minded. Like, I tend to make in community with other artists. So for me, bringing together residents, local artists, everybody has a creative spirit. And so Neighborhood Arts helps bring all those creative spirits together to really connect and create something beautiful.
Okay. So how can we find out more? How can we get involved and be part of this and growing this?
Well, creativegreensborough.com. You can check out all the Neighborhood Arts pages. They'll tell you about the artists. They'll tell you about the projects, where to find them. You'll see lovely pictures of them and you can learn all about them.
Is there anything ongoing right now that we should pay attention to or coming up on the horizon we should know about?
Well, we are doing some great stuff in the Mill District. So we're working with a historic site there to bring, build out an art studio and invite more creativity into East White Oak.
Cool.
And also, we have kids helped create art in Random Woods, so you can sit out on the picnic tables and enjoy art that's been actually inspired by the, the kids in the neighborhood school.
I love it. Okay, we'll keep watching for even more. Thank you so much for spending a little time with us. We have talked so much today about all the creative things that are happening here in Greensboro. Music, art, theater, art for you to not only enjoy, but also to be a part of, to experience, to be behind the scenes with, to be onstage with, to make yourself. So if you want to find out more, if you're ready and inspired to get involved, go to creativegreensborough.com. You can find out more about everything we shared here today, and you can make your mark as well while you're there. Also, you might want to sign up for the newsletter while you're there. That's a great way to stay in the know and be on the top of all the upcoming events and registrations and all that fun stuff. Well, that is our time today. Thank you for spending a little of yours with us. And from all of us here at Greensboro Television Network, we hope you have a great day. Few mangoes, peaches, lime, garlic, cilantro. What does this have the makings of?
Mango habanero salsa that we're making today.
Well, of course, salsa. And it is the annual Men Can Cook event for the Women's Resource Center. Chris Wayne Scott is on the board. You've been participating for lots of years, I know. Tell us about this event.
So this event is really great. This is our 24th year of the event. And it's really just a chance for men in the community that are community leaders, lawyers, business individuals, and just men that just love to cook. You get to be part of this event. We're going to have about 50 chefs for the event this year. And it's just great fun.
Is it a judged event, or do tasters get to choose their favorites?
No. Some, there are times I wish there was a little bit of that, but no. It's really a great time that we get to come together, hear some great music by the band Low Key, good food. And we get to also enjoy some of the local spirits from vendors like Fanning Goat and Steelhead.
Yeah, so because it's Men Can Cook with a twist. I see that. And that's the twist, that there's a little, something extra. It's not just food this year.
That's right.
So fun. How did you get involved with the Women's Resource Center?
I got involved a couple of years ago just through our organization. I was working with VF Corporation and had a chance, they were looking for some volunteers to participate in this event. And another gentleman and I that were part of our employee resource group said yes, and got in, got, got connected, found out more about the Women's Resource Center, and just fell in love with the event and this group.
And so do you cook normally? Is this like a thing you normally, are you the cook at home or anything?
I love to cook at home. My wife is a phenomenal cook. And so, but being in the kitchen, cooking together is one of the great things that we enjoy to do together.
Okay. We're going to let you kind of get to work a little bit. We're going to come back and check in with you in just a minute. But first, we want to talk to Audrey Amos with the Women's Resource Center. All right. So tell us exactly about the mission of the Women's Resource Center.
Right. So we meet women where they are. And, you know, our mission is self-sufficiency. And, you know, we do that by assessing needs and getting women connected to either the resources or services we provide here, or local resources in the community. Could be helping women start a business or to find a job. We have a program, Women to Work, that specifically does that. We have an attorney hotline, which gives women 15 minutes with an attorney to just kind of define their rights and their responsibilities. We have a community resource counseling where women can meet with someone to really kind of say, this is, you know, really what I'd need. And we can get them connected with resources in the community.
And so how does this event support the Women's Resource Center?
Yeah. So this is our biggest and only fundraiser. Our goal is raise about $100,000 for our organization through this fundraiser. And we do that through the ticket sales, which are on sale now. And we do that through our silent auction as well, and through our sponsorships.
And when is the event? Give us all the details.
Yes. So it'll be Saturday, October 5th, at Piedmont Hall off of West Gate City Boulevard, from 5:30 to 8:30.
Lots of good food and lots of fun.
Yes. Yeah, we have the live entertainment. We'll have a fun photo booth, and of course, the twisting tasting room as well.
We love it. We love it. Okay, we need to check back in with Chris and see what's happening over here. All right, you're quite good at dice and slicing.
Well, we are, we're working right now on sliced mango and, and just kind of getting everything prepared together for the salsa.
I can already smell that you've gotten that habanero chopped up as well. I was a little nervous about that one. That's the gloves, right?
That's the gloves. Never, don't, don't touch the eyes.
And is this a family recipe, a secret recipe, or one that you just found and wanted to try?
Yeah, was this one that I found and wanted to try? Just love mangoes this time of the year. And the idea of having just a good salsa is easy to do. And it's something you can put together easily with just chips, or you can use this on chicken, pork, and it's a great marinade.
And will you be making this for the Men Can Cook event?
Not this year. Actually, this year, this was just for today and for the women here. But no, this year we'll be making a banana pudding.
Ooh, the dessert. You're showing your sweet side. Your kind of, your spicy side today, your sweet side on the night of the event.
That's right.
And what is your most favorite thing that the Women's Resource Center does in our community?
You know, I think the thing that makes the Women's Resource Center special is just how they meet the women where they are at a time that they need just the help. And oftentimes, it's, you just don't know what you don't know. And you just need to know where to start. And I think that's what makes the Women's Resource Center so special, is that it just helps the women get connected with the groups and activities that they need in a time that they need it most.
Well said. Thanks, Chris. Thank you, Audrey. We appreciate it. And you can learn more about the event. It's coming up on October 5th. It is the annual Men Can Cook with a twist to benefit the Women's Resource Center. Find out more online at womenscentergsso.org.
November 19th, Greensboro City Council. I need a motion to return into open session. Moved by Mr. Holston, seconded by Dr. Wells. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously. We are in the Katie Dorsett Council Chamber. Let the record reflect that all members are in attendance. We will begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. Mrs. Abuzawater, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Manager, would you recognize our youth courier?
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you very much. Benjamin Bailey is a proud 2024 graduate of North Carolina A&amp;T State University, bringing a, bringing a strong foundation in, in leadership and service in his professional journey, with extensive community service experience and a background in minority and women-owned business enterprise, MWBE initiatives. At the state level, Benjamin has developed a deep commitment to fostering equity and economic empowerment and wants to continue that commitment with the city of Greensboro. Currently working with the Community Relations, Benjamin is transitioning from intern to full-time employee. He's working on the front lines of resident engagement and leveraging skills and passion for public service to make a meaningful impact in our community. His journey reflects dedication, growth, and steadfast commitment to excellence in public administration. growth, and steadfast commitment to excellence in public administration. Ben is originally from Charlotte, North Carolina, and attended J.M. Robinson High School. He has enjoyed his first year hosting City Academy and is excited to see what happens next. Thank you, Benjamin.
Please silence all electronic devices. If you must make or receive a phone call, kindly do so from outside the council chamber. The city of Greensboro is committed to promoting an environment that is free of discrimination, bias, and bullying. Therefore, speakers shall refrain from personal attacks. The presiding officer has the authority to enforce the rules of decorum. Speakers or audience members who intentionally disrupt the meeting or ridicule other speakers will be given a warning, and if unheeded, will be removed from the meeting. That person or persons will be suspended from in-person participation for the next three months. In order to preserve their right to free speech, they may attend virtually via Zoom, by phone, or may submit comments by email. Individuals may sign up to speak to a specific consent or agenda item. Speakers must be signed up to speak by 6 o'clock. Any speaker handouts must be provided to the city clerk or courier for distribution to council. Residents are not allowed to approach the dais unless invited by councils to do so. All speakers must check in with the courier to confirm their presence at the meeting. Speakers are allotted three minutes and may speak once on an agenda item. Zoning matters, I don't think we have zoning, well, in case we do. Zoning matters do allow for a 15-minute presentation both for and against, and there is a five-minute rebuttal period. By statute, council members must vote on all items unless there is a direct financial interest, or if they sit on a board of a nonprofit receiving funding from the city. All votes must be moved and seconded. The presiding officer will announce the vote total. We do have a consent agenda for items G1 through G26, which are a grouping of agenda items that are voted on with one single vote to expedite what are believed to be routine and non-controversial items. Any council member may withdraw an item from the consent agenda due to a conflict of interest, or for the purpose of voting no. Items removed from the consent agenda for discussion will be placed on the December 17th City Council Business Agenda. This meeting does include closed captioning. Depending on the length of tonight's meeting, we may take a short recess around 7:30. The city previously postponed items D1, which was a resolution authorizing and approving bond anticipation notes, and the amendment of a restatement of a joint governmental agreement regarding the Piedmont Triad Water Authority, and D2, a resolution approving the city's obligations under its joint governmental agreement among the city, Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority, and other local governments. From the October meeting to the November meeting, staff now request council to pull the items to allow for additional meetings with the Piedmont Triad Water Authority. Can I have a motion to remove those two items? Moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Mr. Holston. All in favor, say aye. 4216 United Street, the applicant has withdrawn their request to rezone. Can I have a motion? Moved by Mayor Protem, seconded by Mrs. Abuzawater. All in favor, say aye. Against? That passes unanimously. We do not have any ceremonial or presentation items this evening, but I would like the city manager to give us a brief update on the IRC.
Thank you, Mayor. As I was able to inform you all yesterday of a recent change in leadership at the IRC, former Executive Director Christina Singleton attended her resignation. The board then named as an interim director Bernita Curtin. Some of you may remember Bernita from working with us in the past. She's attended work sessions, and I can tell you that, you know, as early as yesterday, city staff, the CMO's office, as well as our police chief, met with Bernita to ensure that we were working with her in that transition, to make sure that we were providing communication as it relates to security. Some of the recent concerns, we were able to talk through those, the concerns from both council, the community, and neighboring businesses. So, we were excited to be able to have that conversation in hopes that as we move forward, we continue the partnership.
Thank you. And I also had requested if we could get a brief update explanation from our Water Resources Director, Mike Borchers, to explain the letter that was mailed out last week or the week before to Greensboro residents.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. I thank you for the opportunity to go ahead and give you an update. First, I'd like to extend, as the Director of Water Resources, I'd like to extend my apology to all of our customers in our community for the undue concern that those letters imparted. It certainly was not our intention to add any more confusion, and unfortunately, that's what a letter did. I'd like to just mention that our water is completely safe for all of its intended purposes. We perform hundreds of thousands of tests on it each and every year to assure the highest quality of water that we provide. Our intention was, of course, to meet this new requirement. It's a federal rule. It's called the Lead and Copper Rule. That was recently revised, and so that was the intent, is that there was a requirement to send out a notification to all of our customers as it relates to service lines. Now, this is the line that basically comes from their meter to the house. In many communities, those are, they're unknown, because they're most, for the most part, they're private. So, what we were doing is, is meeting the intent of the rule to send out notifications. However, as I mentioned, we added undue concern. So, the good news is, is that we are in the process of finalizing all of our efforts to go ahead and identify what are these unknown service lines. That's really what the letter is intended to do, and it's for homes primarily from built from 1986 earlier. And so, the other good news is, is that in all of our investigations, this is field investigations, this is records that we have, GIS data, we have not found any lead service lines within our community. So, that's the very good news. We will finish up all of this work by the first of next year to confirm that the rest of those lines, whether they're galvanized, whether they're copper, whether they're plastic, or what have you. So, that's really what the intent of that letter was, is just to assure our customers that we're trying to identify what those unknown lines are, and to make sure that we comply with the rule. So, again, my apology, but I want to assure all of our customers our water is of the highest quality, and if they've got any concerns, they certainly can call, they can go online, they can call our laboratory, which is 373-7527, but also at the same time, we test all of our customers' water if they have, if they request to do so. And last point I'll mention, this is not, this is not a phenomenon, unfortunately, that's happened to Greensboro. Many other cities, this confusion has been created as well with this letter that's been required by the rule. But we're certainly going to do everything we can to make sure it's very clear to all of our customers that the water is safe.
So, Mike, I think you've fallen on your sword a couple of times over this letter, when in fact, the letter was something that we were required to do, and they gave us the wording of the letter.
Correct.
So, I appreciate you taking responsibility for it, but certainly, it is not you or the Water Department. That was something that we were told we had to do.
Correct.
It obviously was written by an engineer or a bureaucrat.
Oh, I don't know, Natalie.
Uh-oh. I might have stepped in that one.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
But anyway, it is a hard-to-understand letter.
Very much so.
And, you know, maybe there should have been a cover sheet that went out to explain it a little better, but I think what you said was really important, that I want to make sure that everybody hears, and that is that we have no lead lines in our distribution.
Correct.
I mean, say that again. No lead lines.
Correct.
What, what this letter is trying to do is identify if individuals have lead lines leading into their house or in their house. So, you know, I think that's something that really needs to be understood, and I know that the Water Department is ready to help them if there are any questions. And, you know, you and I talked a little bit about the Flint issue that happened, and how people were getting worried that we had the same issues, and we put an additive in our water, and it is a
A corrosion inhibitor, basically. It's a, it's a chemical that's FDA-approved and EPA-approved that allows us to basically ensure that our lines don't corrode internally. Correct. It's a corrosion inhibitor. Absolutely.
So, and that is something that Flint didn't do. They switched water supply, and they did not add that, which is what highlighted most of their problems. That is not us. For the few people who might have lead lines in their, in their homes, we've added this attitude to kind of additive to neutralize it.
Correct. It passivates the inside. So, it's kind of put a coating, like on your car. You have a clear coat on your car. We do the same thing on the inside of our pipes, absolutely, to do that. You're absolutely right. I also would like to thank, though, communications has been great. Thank you to Eric as well, and Contact Center has been fantastic as far as responding to calls and just reassuring customers. But you're absolutely right, Mayor. This is mandated by the rule for us to send this information out, and we did learn a very valuable lesson. We will certainly, when we communicate out to our customers, we will put a cover letter or something just to clearly explain what our intention is, what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, one other quick thing. Thank you for helping all the people that have called me, and you helped. The water testing doesn't cost out anybody anything.
Correct. Correct. Any of our customers, and we have, it goes back to what the mayor said, we have 112,000 metered accounts within the city of Greensboro. Any one of our customers, if they've got any concern about the quality of their water, they can call us, and we will come out there. Absolutely, we will test it. And for this, we've actually put test kits at the libraries. We've got it at our main facility at Ed Kitchen Operations Center on South Eugene Street, or they can call the lab. So, we've got multiple places they can ask for a test kit. They sample, we give them instructions, they sample it, leave it at the front door, and we'll pick it up.
Great. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Great customer service over there, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We have no ceremonial or presentation items tonight, so we'll move on to our consent agenda. Anybody wish to remove an item? Do we have a motion, motion to approve? Who moved? Dr. Wells? Sharon, was there something you wanted to remove to vote no? Okay, so it is moved by Dr. Wells, seconded by Mr. Holston. Council, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. We will now move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Item H1 is a public hearing to receive public comments on the fiscal year 24 Justice Assistant Grant.
Madam Mayor, can I, can I get a little explanation? I've read what it said, but the grant is 2024, but it's saying you're gonna take the money and put toward the cops grant that we just got. Is that what I understand? The $4 million cops, it said you're gonna use it for that, to buy uniforms?
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, and there's no speaker signed up, but we can get you the information, attorney here, ACM here.
That's all right. I'm still an attorney, just not in the city.
Remember, she, now hold it.
I still have my law license. I just can't give legal advice to the city. What, what my update said is that this is for uniforms and equipment for the 30 officers that came under the cops grant. So, it's something separate than the cops grant.
But they came under the cops grant? Is this a new JAG grant that we had? Right, we do it every year, but I thought we did it earlier in the year, and I thought we were doing it with other reasons. Now, we're buying uniforms?
So, last year, I provided you with, each year when we, when it comes back up, I provide you with the intended use of the grant. Last year, it was used for other items, which I can pull that email back up sometime and provide you with that email also.
I know I didn't read uniforms. That's why I'm asking.
Yes, ma'am. So, this year, if you'll know, just a few weeks ago, we were awarded a grant for 30 officers, a cops grant, and that grant only supports 75% of that. So, this would offset some of those costs for the uniform and equipment for those officers.
And so, we don't have any other reasons to use the JAG grant? We have nothing, because I thought we talked about some other things. So, yeah, I would really like to know. I don't know, we need to buy cameras, what, I mean, I'm gonna bring that up again, but tonight, but I was just wondering where the flexibility is within that. I mean, so you're just assuming with this money that we got to hire the 30 cops, which is gonna take, what, a year and a half, or maybe longer year? I don't know, to hire and train and all of that, that we would just hold on to this money to buy uniforms?
So, the previous grant that we received, I mean, that funding is in place now, and so if we, once we indicate that we have, that we received this grant, that will be awarded at a later time, which will be timed about with the federal grant that we received for the cops grant. But as you know, that you indicated, there were previous indications for what we were gonna use those dollars for, and we are still committed to using the previous JAG grant funds for those things, like you said, cameras and other things in different areas.
Yeah, because we keep seeming to have a delay with the camera issue, and we said we assigned it for some of that. I just might not know how it can be implemented, and now we're switching to uniforms.
Dr. Wells?
My question is, didn't we get some new police officers?
That's the cops grant.
Yeah, so don't they have to have some uniforms?
That grant is to hire police officers. It ain't for the
But I'm saying, if you get new people that have joined, then they have to have uniforms.
That's not the way I read this, Goldie. It says for the people under the cops grant. That was the grant we just approved, but we just approved that. We just got that $4 million approval. Right, so we haven't had time to hire nobody. That's what I'm saying.
If I'm, if I'm, Mayor, Madam Mayor. So, the, a way the lot of the grants work, for instance, and I know AC, Deputy City Manager Wilson and I worked on this, you are, apply for the grant, and then there is a delay time until you actually receive the monies. When it is awarded, for instance, we just went through that, and it was a whole year, right, Mr. Wilson? It was a whole year before we got that grant for the Railway Safety Initiative. So, there is a delay, and by the time the cops officers get hired, then this money will probably be coming in in order to get them the uniforms and the equipment they need. I think that's where it is.
So, are we applying for a grant again?
No, no, we
See, that's, that's where the confusion comes. That's where the confusion comes in at, Mary Kay. I understand how the whole process works. I've been here 10 years. But what I'm saying to you is, how do you get in uniforms when you just got the grant before meeting approved for cops, and now you're gonna take this money and put on uniforms?
But we may not get this money for a year, when they will be coming on board, because that grant will have come into fruition.
Yeah, I would like to know the timeline and stuff, but anyway, I'm a no. I'm gonna vote no.
Okay. I don't know that there's a vote. There is no vote. This was just to receive input.
It's a, it's a public hearing.
It is to, there is no vote.
It's a public hearing. We gotta vote.
It was to receive, it was to receive comment.
It's, it's a public
It was to receive comments.
Okay.
We were not, it is not the vote on, on accepting the JAG grant, right? It's just
I thought we already accepted it earlier, because I thought I
That was, that was a different one.
No, it wasn't.
All right, so, no vote on this, correct? No vote.
Madam Mayor, let's make one comment, since we have a public comment.
Yes.
I fully support this, and I'll take every penny the JAG money will give us from the feds, and if they want to triple it, I'll take that too. Anything we can do to help our men and women that support us every day in public safety, I support.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item H3, which is a public hearing for a resolution to close a portion of Mc Houston Right of Way by La, by La Hamise for Investment Group, NCLLC.
Your Honor, it's item two, which is Random and Road.
You moved, you skipped Random and Road. You moved, you skipped Randallman Road.
I skipped, I skipped right over it. Item H2 is a public hearing to consider adoption of the Randallman Road Corridor Plan Phase Two, and we have four speakers signed up to speak on that item.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and City Council. Good evening. My name is Russ Clegg. I work in the Planning Department, and I manage the Long Range Planning Division. I have a few brief slides before, we have some folks here that would like to speak on this item. Tonight, we are asking City Council to hold the public hearing and consider adoption of the Randallman Road Corridor Plan Phase Two. This plan will be used by community members, business owners, property owners, when they're advocating for the area. City staff will use this plan when we're looking at programs and allocating funding. And also, when we're looking at rezoning cases, decision makers will use this when we're trying to determine what land uses are best fit for the area. The stretch of Randallman Road in this plan goes from I-85 south to I-40. It's about a 2.3 mile stretch of road. In this planning process, we really focused on the road itself and the properties adjacent to the road. It is a state road, so we've worked with NC DOT as well. It's also a key gateway into downtown. In October, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing and voted unanimously to recommend in favor of support of the plan. We were very fortunate to have great community turnout throughout the process, both in all three of our larger public meetings, and also when we were out talking with the community and, and going door to door. We really had great community support, in particular from New Goshen Methodist Church, which was a great host for all of our meetings. We started off with just a general kickoff meeting to get general input about the area, to make sure we were, had an understanding of what some of the major concerns were. We drafted a set of recommendations based on what we heard from the public and what we, other departments were working on, and brought those out in July, and then made some small tweaks for our September open house, where we really focused on implementation and moving forward. But it was much easier to put this plan together with that great level of support that we had. So the vision statement is what we want to be true after this plan is implemented. This one speaks to Randallman Road being a welcoming gateway to the city, but also a central connection for the surrounding neighborhoods. It's a healthy and vibrant place that serves those adjacent communities, but also attracts people across the area because it's very unique and has a range of vibrant offerings. There are four recommendation areas. Modernization talks about improving the properties adjacent to the road, attracting new investment, and really breathing new life into that part of the corridor. Movement focuses on transportation, the different aspects of transportation besides cars with, with transit and pedestrian movement. Safety speaks to, just the safety, which is really bedrock to this. We have to make sure that people feel safe and are safe on the corridor. And well-being speaks to creating a sense of place, making it a healthy corridor that supports the well-being of the surrounding communities as well. Implementation will be very important to this plan. We have really focused on that as we, as we were putting the plan together. We'll start with some jumpstarts that'll help create momentum and kind of build as we move forward. We, at our last meeting, got the top three priorities for code enforcement and speeding enforcement and overgrown vegetation, but we have a number of things that we'll start with to really get us moving. We'll also start on some projects that will be, take a little while to, to bear fruit, some of the longer-term projects. It's a long corridor, so we'll focus on some key intersections to begin with at Creek Ridge, in Vandyia, and Glendale, but eventually really get the whole corridor filled in from there. But that will be where we look at some intersection improvements and some improvements to the surrounding properties. And of course, we have land use guidance that speaks to how we will look at rezoning cases, and when we talk to new businesses, what types of businesses we'll be looking for. So, brief presentation, but at this point, answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
I, I do, but we can hear from the speakers. But I, I heard you talk about implementation. And there are some things, I heard you say you're gonna start initially. I don't think I caught where you were gonna start, jumpstart.
With, most of the jumpstarts are, are things that cover a broader range of the, you know, like traffic enforcement, things of that nature. They're kind of more dispersed along the whole stretch of the road, so it's not in particular, we'll focus on one particular place. Now, code enforcement issues may obviously zero in, but that'd be more of a broad approach to the whole, whole road. For instance, we might look at sidewalks to see if there are sidewalks improvements or repairs that need to be made, but we'd be scanning the whole road to look at those. And then really be a little more focused on some of the longer-term, bigger, bigger budget items.
I, I, I personally would like to see some jumpstarts around cameras. Community been asking for that, that's why I'm asking about the grant, where, where money is. And cameras, they keep asking about certain cameras at certain intersections, red light cameras. What is it now? Did you say something?
Counsel, I'll kind of give you an update on the cameras on Randallman Road.
I'm gonna keep asking for them because the community keeps asking for them. And I don't know when you all are gonna get it. But, and red light cameras is the other one. What did she say now? What?
No, I asked you a question. I apologize.
Oh.
Counsel, I think on the cameras, there was, we do have an update. Our folks have been moving forward. ACM Harold has made contact with NC DOT. Because the roadway is a state-maintained roadway, we do have to have their permission. I believe she had received a note today.
Hold on a second.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll just wait. Okay.
I believe she received feedback today that she would have a reply, I think by close of business tomorrow. So we'll give you an update. As soon as we hear from that, we'll give you, but I, I can tell you that we are moving as fast as we can on it, because we know how important they are. And, and they're actually important to help us from a public safety standpoint, have more coverage, so we are on that.
Well, and the reason why, I guess, I keep harping on it, because that was part of the reason we even pushed this Randallman Road Corridor Plan again, is to put some things down in black and white so we could get it done. And I think that's where we need to start focusing on. Code enforcement is something that I think we can do every day, every week, all along, but having more streetlights to light it up so they're not hitting spots there, keep having incidences. And the incidences we're having are not code enforcement incidences, they're just random acts of violence, but people are getting afraid. And so we wanna clean the corridor up so we can recruit more retail, more business, more restaurants, more for the community to have. And so I think cameras, red light cameras, streetlights, some of those things are, I think we need to start focusing on and getting implemented, because they've been asking for it. And I, and I, I hear them loud and clear. Thank you, Russ.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I appreciate all your work, Russ, and what all the community, so thank you for that.
Okay, we have five speakers signed up. Our first three are James Bassnight, Kirsten Nguyen, and Philip Marsh. If you would go to the window side of the room.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us. We appreciate it. My name is James Bassnight. I'm the Executive Director of the Randallman Road Community Association, the 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And we advocate for four community watch groups off Randallman Road. And we want to be involved, engaged, and taken into consideration that we would like to see some more quality businesses. We're tired of vape shops. We're tired of pawn shops, adult, adult entertainment. We need to do better. We, we, we advocate for. Let, let me have my people stand, please, because we always ask, "For your people." Randallman Road, please stand. We, when I say we, right now, I'm speaking for this group of people, so thank you so much. We would like to see some youth-oriented activity on Randallman Road. We, we know all the gambling shops and vape shops, and it's not working. Please help us to get, and we will work with you. We want to work with you. That's what we're here for, to tell you that we're at your disposal, to use us to help create some quality community projects on Randallman Road. And I'm gonna start right there, because other folks wanna talk, and I don't wanna overstay my welcome. Thank you so much for having us.
Good evening, Mayor Vaughn, and members of the council. Kirsten Nguyen, 616 Fourth Brook Drive, Greensboro, North Carolina. In light of the safety concerns and recent events of violence Pull it down a little bit. Okay, there we go. In light of the safety concerns and recent events of violence on Randallman Road and the surrounding area, it is imperative that the city of Greensboro is taking an active approach and concentrate on the revitalization without gentrification, and move forward with the entire Randallman Road Corridor Project. With stricter code enforcement to support safety concerns, that residents as well as business owners impacting not only revenue, but most importantly, attract future reputable and much-needed businesses to come to Randallman Road. The once striving community and area on the south and southeast side of Greensboro has been forgotten and neglected, resulting in a food desert and lack of resources in comparison to the rest of the city. Saturation of pawn gun vape shops, used car lots, bars, and a newly sweep gambling place, which is located in the former Pizza Hut building across from McDonald, are not what the residents consider to be a safe haven, nor is it productive for the safety and the concerns that the residents and business owners have. The support of the entire city council is needed to revive this area and make it a priority. Randallman Road is an integral part that feeds into the heart of the city and residents, businesses, who are the taxpayers, the voters, that depend on the Randallman Road Plan to come to fruition sooner than later. And I'm gonna leave you with some food for thought. Imagine if there is a lack of resources in your area or your community, if there are safety concerns. If every resident would pack up, sell their property, and move, this city would be in total chaos. Thank you so much for your time.
After Mr. Marsh, we have Shirley Foster, followed by Crystal Black.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to briefly speak on the Randallman Road Corridor as well. When this conversation was had by Councilmember Hightower, and it was first initiated with, I think, City Manager Jayoba, we on Washington Street also advocated, and it was agreed to, that that would be the other corridor. We have not really seen much action with regards to this conversation, as Randallman Road has, unfortunately, the death kind of spurred this current conversation going on. But, you know, I just want to center this conversation to, a lot of the problems that we see all over the city is directly because of the organization formerly known as the IRC. And as we address the multitude of issues at the IRC, we will solve some of these problems in the other parts of the city. And so I just wanted to center that and make sure that was on the record of being said as we try to clean up this mess that is coming from this very hot spot in the city, that, you know, this is where some of those problems are coming from. And we hope that our friends over on Randallman Road are successful with their doing. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want anybody to be confused. The IRC is still called the IRC.
Good evening, I'm Shirley Foster. I've lived out on the Randallman Road area for 35 years, and when I moved there, I moved back from Pittsburgh and moved out there, and I thought it was a wonderful place to be. Now I'm afraid. I don't see a reason that I need to move. What I need to see is a reason for the city to care about me. I need service, direct service. We all do. When I call the police and say something, "Well, you have got to do this, and you have got to do that," well, I might as well go and point to the people. I mean, it goes on. This weekend was just horrific. All the things that I heard from this weekend was enough to scare me enough to want to move. But I've been a dedicated community leader in this city and in this neighborhood for 35 years. Don't promise me anything, give it to me. I've been dealing with this for at least 15 years, and we have not seen any changes. We want change so we can stay here. We're now, most of us are now seniors. Why would we want to move? We paid for these homes. Now the investors are coming here and trying to force us to move out of our homes. So that brings in more renters. More renters bring more problems. I don't care how much they're paying, because if somebody cannot pay $2,000 on a 750 job, what do you think they're gonna do to make sure they pay it? Now we got the blood plasma place up there. That was where it began. Then we got the pawn shops, we got the vape shops. And you can hear, according to a neighbor, why he was in there, I don't know, but he said a drug dealer came in and said, "I got some of the best," whatever he called it, "in the world." I said, "Well, why were you in there?" He said, "He gets wife's cigarettes," or something. I don't know why he was in there, but he told it. So all of this is going on. It goes on in my neighborhood. I called the police. Well, they didn't do enough. They didn't quite have enough on them for us to do anything about it. I don't understand that. I do not understand why I must be subjected, and the people around me have to be subjected. We're not low-income people, we're educated people. Why are not we being served? That's my question. And please do something about Randallman Road.
Good evening, council members. Crystal Black. I never give my address, 1120 Highstone Drive. I am here to support the residents on the second half of Randallman Road, but also to say that stick with it. Stick with it. Do not fail this community again, because you failed them once with the first area plan that was not even started. So we have asked this community to come again, meet. I listened to Russ give his wonderful spiel about how we came together to share what we wanted, but I guarantee you, if you pull the old plan out and you compare it to the new plan, they are asking for the same things. The exact same things. So what that tells me is that you all didn't do your job. The city departments didn't do their job. And so what I'm asking you to do now is stick with it. We can't go backwards, but we can go forward. Can't go backwards, but you can go forward. Put some dollars behind what you are committing to. That didn't happen in this plan. This is great, I love the colored copies, sure I paid for it. Sure, I paid for it somewhere down the line with my tax dollars, but if you are not gonna implement it, do not waste the time of the people that came up here to speak today, because that has what, that is what has happened in the past. I know that we're on the other side of Randleman Road. There's a south area plan. These kind of marry. These kind of marry. I have been giving them their voice, because they deserve to have their voice for their end and what they'd like to see, but do not forget that they have the support of the Southeast Greensboro Coalition. We will show up and ensure that this second half of this plan is implemented. I want to see some immediate wins, some short-term goals and long-term goals, but there are some immediate wins that can happen on Randleman Road, starting with code, starting with looking at some of the cesspools that we have operating already on Randleman Road that we turn a blind eye to, that I see little code cars riding past. So, we're gonna have some honest conversations, and we're really gonna do the work that needs to be done to get Randleman Road where it needs to be. We've gotta be honest about what we didn't do and how we're gonna move forward. Stick with the plan. Please stick with the plan, because Southeast Greensboro Coalition is watching, and we're gonna ensure that this half of Randleman Road is honored the same as our half of Randleman Road. So, thank you for your time.
So, I do want to say that...
Can we close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I do want to say that it's, Randleman Road is really not split in half. We are looking at all of Randleman Road. Am I not right, Russ? Yeah, so we're looking at all of Randleman Road, because when we're talking about cameras, we're talking about cameras at Vandelia Creek Ridge. That's further southeast. So, we're actually looking at the whole corridor, really that's, this is phase two of that first plan that did not, that only did the first part of it, did not do the full. This plan also should have dollars attached to these ideas, so that we know what those dollars are and how we can start finding that money and start putting it to work. That's what we gotta do, okay? It is no good to have had a plan with no dollar attached to it, to know what it's gonna cost, where we gotta start finding this money. And we got the money. We got money in pots, some we need to start utilizing. And Randleman Road needs to be a priority. It is a priority for you all, and it has to be a priority for us up here. And the direction to staff is find the money to get these things done that we've seen in this plan. No longer just have a plan, have an implementation process to get it moving. And that is the goal here. That is the goal. We're no longer gonna keep talking about it. I hear you. I know you're frustrated. I'm frustrated with you, because I drive it too. I don't live over that side, but I drive it, and I want to drive it safely, and I want you all to be safe. The last two incidents that occurred on Randleman Road unfortunately occurred there, but were incidences that unfortunately were done by people who knew each other and don't respect. And that's part of our problem too. Gotta have better respect for human beings. And that just didn't happen. And unfortunately, we can't predict that all the time. But we can make sure that it's as safe as it can be, that you feel good about being over there, you feel good about telling people the side of town you live on, you want to have pride in, you take pride in your home, you buying your home, you taking care of your home, you want the community to look the same identical way. And I get it. I understand it one hundred percent. That's why we push for this. And we're still gonna make sure that it does this, that we fulfill all these things we've talked about in here. So, staff know that you better, you're gonna have to find the money, council. We're gonna have to find the money. Sometime we're gonna have to say, "Well, we can't do this, because we need to do this on Randleman Road." That's what we need to do. And that's my commitment to you all.
May I create then Hugh?
And Mrs. Hightower, I think we are all committed to this, and I wanted to commend you, because do you remember when you first came on council? We walked up and down Randleman Road. I have pictures of you, and we walked almost from one area to another and pointed out the things that needed to be fixed and the things that would make life easier for those who lived in the surrounding communities. So, I want to thank you, and I also believe that we need to have some kind of update occasionally, I don't know how often, but to see where everything stands and how much is being done, because I think that would be great for the community to know as well. You know, we fix a lot of things and don't even mention it, and I think it would be great for the community to know how far along we are in these things. So, I would like to request that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have been a thirty-one-year resident of Randleman Road, and I've seen the updates and the changes that have occurred. I would say that I give thanks to Councilwoman Hightower for initiating this endeavor. Also want to thank the city staff for taking up, for taking that baton and running with it, and running with it very quickly and creating this plan. And also want to thank the community organizations and the businesses that have also played a role in it. But like Councilwoman Hightower, I do not see this simply as an exercise. I do not see it simply as we finished this project, this book report, and now we're finished with it. We're gonna see it through. We're gonna follow it through. I'm on Randleman Road at least twice a day, every day, and will be there looking for the updates, looking for the, for the changes, looking for the commitments, looking for the investment, the investment of those dollars. And then as we look at Randleman Road, we can also look at others, whether it's Washington Street or other communities. We're only gonna be as strong in this, in this city if we're all strong, not just one or the other. We're, we started with others. Randleman Road is now a part of it. Now we have the opportunity to keep building and keep investing, because again, we're only gonna be as strong as if all of us are strong. So I thank everyone for helping make this happen. Now let's invest in other communities also.
I just want to give my commitment to Councilwoman Hightower. I know you worked hard on this, and Goldie, Dr. Wells has worked hard on this, and I don't like funding plans that just sit on a desk and collect dust. And so, as long as I sit up here, the Randleman Road District does have my commitment to help support you and your constituency, and quite frankly, Randleman Road is a gateway for downtown. And so, I just wanted to let you know that I support all of you and Councilwoman Hightower.
I'm pleased to see so many of you come to support your community. I want you to know your councilwoman has fought hard. We've been working for East Greensboro, but she's fought hard to get this document. And I appreciate the fact that staff had input from over, was it two hundred of you who had input, so they were trying to find out what you want. And I think the commitment of all of us up here, everybody's not saying anything, but we pushed to get this done. Staff has done it, and we will see that it is shepherded along so that it will become a reality. We don't want you coming back up here fussing, saying you didn't do what you said. We're gonna do what we say, and it's gonna, Randleman Road will be improved. You'll see it soon.
Any further comments? Motion?
Move the aye.
Moved by Sharon, seconded by Hugh. Council, please vote. And that passes nine to zero.
Thank you all very much. And we will be back in, when the cameras go up, when, six months, three months, two months?
All right. We'll move on to item H3, which is a public hearing for a resolution to close a portion of Mc Houston Street Right-of-Way by L. Humsey for the investment group NCLLC. We have no speakers signed up on this. Mike, very brief.
There we go. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, the request is to close portions of Houston Road Right-of-Way. And to be very clear, this is just portions of the right-of-way itself. They're not actually closing any portion of the road itself with this. The idea is that the owner wants to acquire this additional property to do new residential development on there, and they need this as part of their development plans with that. The property's currently vacant at this point in time. This just gives you a better idea of kind of what's being closed. Again, it's a very small portion of right-of-way. As with a normal street closing, any portion of unopened right-of-way as well needs to go through the same process, so the city has to make determinations on that, basically that the closing of that right-of-way is not contrary to the public interest and that no property owner is deprived of reasonable means of egress or ingress and egress. Technical Review Committee did recommend the closing of these portions of the street right-of-way to be closed at their October eleventh meeting and made those findings that required under state law. There are no additional conditions as far as the recommendation from TRC, and then Planning and Zoning Commission looked at this item at their October twenty-first meeting, also recommended approval of that. There were no speakers at that hearing, and it was unanimous recommendation for approval. I can answer any questions.
Any questions? Second. Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Mrs. Abuza Wader. Council, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. We now move on to item H4, which is a public hearing for a resolution to close a portion of Standard Drive that bisects 209 Little Santee Road, Kevin McDonald for Promac LLC, formerly Intercraft Retained Assets LLC. Mr. Kirkman, we have no speakers. Brief overview?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And this actually is somewhat of a phase two, if you will, of a street closing. The council actually approved a closing of another portion of Standard Drive at their meeting last month, and the idea in both cases was to foster future industrial development on these properties. As before, same recommendations are needed to make that determination. The Technical Review Committee did review the application, determined that it was appropriate to recommend approval of the closing. There was one condition that the TRC put with that recommendation for closure. Planning and Zoning Commission then also heard this item at their October twenty-first meeting, unanimous, recommended approval of the street closing request. Again, there were no speakers at that hearing. I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kirkman?
Move the ayes.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Mr. Holston. Council, please vote. We'll now move on to the general business portion of our agenda. We'll take item I1 and I2 together. Item I1 is a resolution to approve in four to implement a consolidated workforce management system for time and attendance tracking for one million three, three thousand four hundred dollars. And item I2, a resolution to approve change order number one, consulting services contract with RPI consultants for implementation of a new workforce management system in the amount of one million twenty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. These items were postponed from the November fourth meeting. Do we have any questions on I1 or motion?
We have.
Moved by Mr. Holston, seconded by Dr. Wells.
I didn't vote.
No, ma'am.
I'm debating.
Okay.
Because it's got a way. All right. I'm gonna have a conversation with you, Mr. City Attorney.
And that passes nine to zero. And then item I2. Do we have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Mrs. Abuza Wader. Council, please vote. Move on to items I3 and I4. Item I3 is a resolution approving bid in the amount of seven million nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars and authorizing execution of contract 2022-040A with Harper General Contractors, Inc. for the TZ Osborne Water Reclamation Facility Influent Pumps Replacement Project. And item I4, ordinance amending capital project revenue bond fund budget to fund TZI Influent Pump Construction Project in the amount of seven million nine hundred and twenty thousand. Do we have questions or a motion? Moved by Dr. Wells, seconded by Mrs. Hoffman. Council, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. And I need a motion for I4. Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Mrs. Abuza Wader. Council, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. We'll take I5 and I6 together. I5 is a resolution authorizing an inter-local agreement between the city of Greensboro and Guilford County for fifteen million county allocation for construction of the Windsor-Chavis-Snoco Community Complex. And item I6, an ordinance amending local government grant fund budget for appropriation of fifteen million allocation from Guilford County for the construction of the Windsor-Chavis-Snoco Community Complex.
Second.
So, that was moved by Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Dr. Wells.
Okay. Well, yeah, Goldie was gonna move it. Okay. Yeah. Yes. I just want to say...
That carries nine to zero, and we do have one more vote. We need, I need a motion for I6.
Second.
Okay, that was moved by Dr. Wells and seconded by Mrs. Hightower. Council, please vote.
Okay. All right. Great. Great.
And that passes nine to zero. Mrs. Hightower?
Oh, I didn't know if Dr. Wells wanted to say anything. I'll, I'll give to her first.
I'm pleased, I'm pleased that we can approve this item, because it's a game changer. It's, it's, the facility will be recognized all over the country for its uniqueness, for the parks and to join with the library, and it's going to be outstanding on the corridor. It's going to be, when I say a game changer, the looks will change in this part of East Greensboro. It will raise the morale, I guess you'd say, for East Greensboro. So, we're pleased... pleased that we can accept this funding from the county. This is a major project. And so we thank staff because they've been working on it for quite a while. And we're looking forward to come to fruition soon.
So I just want to, yeah, thank staff, Phil, and Bridgette, and Shauna. They've really put their head together. This is gonna be transformative. And when we talk about the word transformative, sometimes we just say it because it just becomes a buzzword. But in all actuality, this itself is really gonna be very transformative. The uniqueness of it, the design of it, the appearance of it, are all things that are gonna raise the level of the profile in East Greensboro as you come down Gate City Boulevard from all aspects of the city. And people from all over the city will utilize this space, the indoor aquatic feature that's gonna be there, all the other moving parts that are gonna be there, not just a library on one side and parts of rec basketball on the other, but it's gonna be all integrated into one that you may want to find yourself staying there the whole day just to enjoy every single aspect of it. It is something this community has needed. It's a shot in the arm. It has taken us a while to get here for having a project that is really about $75 million because of all the money we put into the design. I want to thank the county because when they heard about this project, they wanted to be a part of it. And I'm glad we found a way. It's gonna be some social services within the content of it. People won't have to travel so far to be able to get those kinds of services right in the community where it will be housed. It's gonna be very unique. It's gonna offer things. The city will pay in the water bill there. It's gonna be something that people, you know, not that we don't want them to come downtown, but they don't have to come, transportation or whatever, they'll have something right there. So I'm excited by this project. Many people think it's in my district because I guess I've talked about it so much. It is in Dr. Wells' district too, but it's East Greensboro. It's where I think my heart lies and for this particular project. So I can't wait for Saturday. That will be our groundbreaking Saturday. And so, yes, we will tear that building down, but we're gonna get something really fabulous in this community. It is our turn. It is our time to shine. And this project, along with many, many more that are coming up, A&amp;T doing the resurgence, is really highlighting, you know, the assets that we have, who we are, and what we are all about with Random Row Plan, all that coming into fruition. It is just our time. So I'm excited.
This, this is really exciting, and it will be very impactful. I can remember when we first started having discussions about putting the recreation center and the library together. I think we were thinking on a much smaller scale. What would it look like to have a place you could go pay bills? It would be kind of a one-stop shop. Jamal was still on council. We did pass a bond for engineering and exploration. And what came out of that was something that I don't think any of us anticipated. You know, words won't do it justice. I hope that people really familiarize themselves with what this community complex will be. In addition to Guilford County, and I'm very grateful to the county for contributing $15 million, that is a huge partnership, but we also have Cone Health coming on board, which is going to have a community healthcare ingredient in the community center. It's so much more than a library and a rec center. It'll have a pool and an amphitheater and teaching facilities. And then to be able to go across the street with the new ball fields, it's really hard to imagine. While this is the, the city of Greensboro voters passed a bond for $50 million. We have this $15 million from the county. We have an investment coming from Cone. All told, it'll probably be in excess of $85 million. That is a huge investment that we are making in an area of town that has been underinvested in for decades and decades. We will be committing more funding to this than we do to the Tanger Center. This will be the Tanger Center on Gate City Boulevard. And so I don't think we can overstate what a transformative project this is. And I'm really looking forward to the groundbreaking. And I really can't wait to see it actually being used by people throughout East Greensboro and beyond. And while you said that people throughout the country are gonna be looking for this, because this is a first-of-its-kind complex, and we have a great architect working on it, it will get global recognition because of what it does and the way it is going to impact that area. So this is very exciting. We do have the groundbreaking Saturday at 11:00. Everybody should come out. I think it's gonna be a great event and really can't wait to see the construction get done on this complex. All right, well, then we will move on to item I7, which is a resolution authorizing a loan of $1,735,642 to Affordable Housing Management, Inc. for Oakwood Park. We do have Jill, and I'm gonna mess up her last name. Jill, we have Jill here from Affordable Housing, if we have any questions. But if we can certainly turn it over to staff for a presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Anna Blanchard. I work in the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department as the multifamily development analyst. And tonight I have for your consideration the affordable housing development of Oakwood Park, which is funded with federal home art funds. This project came to you back for the first time in July 18th, 2023, for a commitment in order to be eligible for state North Carolina housing finance funding. And now it is coming back for authority to contract so that the loan can close on the city side and that the project can start construction. This is Oakwood Park at 2943 West Vandelia Road. It's right next to Red Hill Point, which you're probably familiar with. And the funding recommendation is for about $1.7 million in a 15-year forgivable loan. This is a permanent supportive housing project for families and has already been awarded NCHFA Sharp Funding, which is some of their permanent supportive housing funding as well. The HUD Environmental Review is nearing completion. MWBE goals have been set. And as you can see here, it's consistent with the Housing GSO and Home Art Plan. It's city council priorities of serving households at 30% to 60% of area median income. This actually serves folks from 30% to 50%. Will be Energy Star Multifamily New Construction. And again, is permanent supportive housing with a partnership with Greensboro Urban Ministry to have case management and supportive services. So a little bit more information about the site. You can see the map here as well as a rendering of the building itself. It's one building with 16 units, 10 units that are at 30% AMI and below. And I'll highlight here, they're actually lower than we often see even at the 30% level. All of those units, those 10 are $200 or less monthly. And then there's another six units at 50% AMI and below, a target of home art qualifying populations. Again, new construction with total development cost right around $4.9 million and city financing of 1.7 from the federal home art project. So the funding schedule, we're asking for the authority to contract tonight. In December, we expect the HUD Environmental Review to be finalized. We have all the information back. We're in the public comment period for that right now. We anticipate a city loan closing in January and then shortly after that to have construction start. And I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
If everything goes on track, sorry, somebody else first. If everything goes on track, what is the anticipated completion?
It would be spring 2025. So right now, it really depends on when the loan closes, but we're thinking.
Right, right, right.
March 2025.
Yeah.
Or sorry, 2026.
2026.
Spring 2026, yeah.
Just curiosity.
That would be way too quick. I won't, I won't say that.
We'll take 2025.
2026, yeah.
I know. But yeah, okay, thank you. That was all.
So I have a couple of questions. If somebody else.
Well, I'm just writing down that Yvonne made the motion and Hugh seconded it.
Sharon?
Okay, a couple of things. And I had asked about the MWBE portion. When are we gonna vet because all we're doing tonight is, I guess, given the authority for the contract. But in March, it's gonna start with the construction. So when will we vet and do the MWBE? Chuck, do you know? I'd ask Gwen. But the contract needs to be reviewed before construction starts.
So for this process, since it's a contract with a developer and then the GC is responsible for meeting the MWBE goals, the goals have been set there at 20% MBE and 17% WBE. And then between the time of the city loan closing before construction, it would go through the MWBE process and be reviewed.
Yeah, we have to, right.
And go through all those.
I wanted to know when it was going to the office.
Yes.
To be reviewed by your office.
Yes, it'll be between.
Because once construction starts, you already, you, you don't have no opportunity for stuff.
I understand your point. I would probably need to talk to Gwen specifically about it. What she has said sounds reasonable to me, though.
So I want to make sure we keep an eye on it. And I've, and I've talked to Jill at Affordable Housing Management, and she's amenable, I would say that, to doing it as well. But we just want to make sure we help her with that process. My other question, you talk about it's a 15-year forgivable loan. Let me ask you a question, and you may not know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask the question maybe to say, what happens after the 15 years? If you forgive that loan after 15 years, what happens? That property then has no obligation. The reason I'm saying that is because there are about four properties in this city where we loan money, the loans have now expired, and the properties are now in disrepair. They got no heat, they got no air, they're not paying their bills, and lights are going out because, so it's like you get the money to do it, and then once the money expires, they don't care what happens to the property. In some cases, they've sold it off to somebody else. Do we have any obligations or requirements after that 15 years? And I may not be in 15 years, but what I'm worried about is the people who are gonna move in there. And then when those loans are forgiven, then that property goes to market.
Yeah.
You know, you know the apartments I'm talking about right now.
And that's, that's an extreme concern for us as well. The properties you're talking about, once the period of affordability ended, they were sold and back to the regular market. And we know the condition of those now and what we're dealing with with that now. For this, because it is a 15-year loan, it is a 15-year period of affordability. So when you consider where we're making investments like these, having apartment, having a partner like AHMI, who we know has a long-term reputation of keeping those properties in good repair and good condition and following through long after the period of affordability becomes really imperative. We're looking at multiple ways to extend our periods of affordability for investments that we make. We're looking at everything from, you know, deed restrictions to all options that are available to us because that's a huge concern. Basically, what it means is every, between 15 and 30 years, the things we invest in, we lose our ability to make sure that they stay affordable and they're maintained the way we need them to be.
Well, when you look at the rents, you're talking $200 low rent. And then, you know, based on, I guess, the 30% AMI and up to 50, I mean, it's gonna become a grave concern in 15 years if we don't have some way to ensure affordability. And I don't know legally, Chuck, we need to start looking into that now, unseen, before we close on that.
Yeah, and that's, that's a really good point. And we've had conversations with Tony and others around that to look at all the ways we can make our periods of affordability longer. Because ideally, we want it to be as long as it possibly can because it's exactly the situation we're dealing with, with those apartments that you know about. And so it's just this constant churn. So there've got to be new models that were taken on that give us longer affordability periods.
So I, I, I'd really like to ask Chuck and you all, let's, I guess I'm concerned about it. It's not in my district, no. But the fact of the matter, I've seen this happen with these apartment buildings because affordability is now gone. And the people who acquired them, they don't care one way or the other. So they're not putting any money back into them. The rents, the rents are low still.
Right.
To some degree, and they are, but they're not.
Being maintained.
Maintained. Lights are being turned out. $60,000 water bills. I mean, it's just unreal what is happening to people. And I just don't want to put people in that type of situation.
Yeah, I agree. And, and, you know, to say that with a partner like AHMI, who we know has a history of being in this business for that purpose specifically, that gives some degree of, of security around that for what happens at the end of that affordability period. So those are certainly considerations we take into play as we make these decisions.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see what you would kind of wind up with, you know, I understand. Stay within HUD guidelines, of course, and, and state law and all that. But I just think we keep talking about code enforcement, code enforcement. Code enforcement, now gotta do random row. Code enforcement, gotta do these apartments. I mean, so we're setting up stuff for code enforcement.
Yep.
If we don't have protections in place. So, and that's what.
Yep, absolutely. Absolutely.
But I, I appreciate all Affordable Housing Management, you know, is doing the, you know, to build those type of apartments.
And these are family units, which I know has been important to you for a long time.
Very.
So this, this particular development adds space for those kind of larger family sizes that we haven't had opportunities for.
Oh, absolutely. And I'm glad to see that happen to them. And so maybe we can get them done, Eric K., in 2025.
I'll get you a hammer.
But, yeah, so glad, glad to see this get done. And thanks to Jill, too. Thank you all.
Tammy?
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank AHM and Jill. You know, it is right next door to another one of their developments in my district, and it really is a crown jewel. It's a beautiful development. And, you know, I've had several people comment that they were kind of dreading it and all the uproar about Sedgfield and the barn and, and all of that. And AHM has just been such good partners and takes such good care, care of their properties, that it's a pleasure to have you all expanding in District 5. So thank you.
And, and we are hitting that price point that is so hard for people to find housing. So this is, this is really good.
Hi, I'm Brady Hachman. I'm the Director of Operations of Property Management for Affordable Housing Management. And Jill Faniff, our executive director's back there, and she has a little bit of a bum leg, so I'm gonna come up here and speak about the projects that are actually surrounding that same piece of land. We actually opened Red Hill Point two years ago at the end of 2022, which has a 20, 30-year affordability rate. And then we also will be opening Vandelia Acres 2026, 2027, which will have ASAE co-ments with it as well.
Thank you. So this item's been moved by Mayor Protem and then seconded by Mr. Holston. Counsel, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. And our final item, yes, our final item is I.8, a resolution to affirm council action for fund balance improvement plan and other related communications.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Holston, seconded by Mrs. Hightower. Counsel, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. Boards and commissions, Mrs. Hoffman?
I have none.
Mrs. Thurm? Dr. Wells, Mayor Protem? Mrs. Abuza Waiter? Mr. Mepini? Mr. Holston? Mrs. Hightower? Comments, Mrs. Hightower? Comments, Mrs. Hightower?
Just briefly, I wanted to give my condolences to the family of Dr. A P Bell, who passed away a couple of weeks ago. He was about ninety-three. He lived on the corner of Florida and Bimbo Road. He was a agricultural professor at North Carolina A N T State University, so, and to Mr. Bob Childs' family. Mr. Childs was a banker at Wells Fargo, well, Walco prior to that, but, so, wanted to send my condolences to both of those families. Everybody okay? Also, there was an event this weekend called Triad Strong, an enjoyable event hosted by Buster Brown with the New Cool Movement in conjunction with our Office of Community Safety, the E S R, Establishing Safe Cultures, and I am akin, so, trying to address peace on purpose, so we don't continue to have these violent acts that we see and hear about too much, and so a great event to reach out to the youth. He had to change the venue from Barbara Park to Over Smith High School, so not quite the turnout that we wanted, but I think the message was still clear, and we're planning to do it again, to continue to do that, to send positive messages throughout the community that violence is certainly not the answer to conflict, and that we can have peace on purpose, and so I wanted to thank them for pulling that together, so. And happy Thanksgiving, everyone. I guess I won't see y'all again. So enjoy turkey, or whatever you eat, whatever you eat, in my case, chicken, but okay, whatever that is, enjoy, don't eat too much, and we'll see you in December. But I'll be calling, so don't go too far away. Don't take Thanksgiving too early, 'cause I will be calling, so thank you to staff for everything. Thank you.
Mr. Holston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dr. Wells and I had the opportunity to, this past weekend, at the Vance Shavis Library, meet with some journalists from North Carolina A N T, sponsored by the Journalism School, and the title was Solutions Journalism, talking about good news stories in our community, and we had a chance to share and listen. It was a great event. G P D was there, East Greensboro now was there. It was a great event. And next is, one second, congratulations, we're at the N C C J Saturation Award Dinner. Congratulations to the award winners, Ellen, Lenny Gerber, and also our Greensboro's own, Dr. Hank Smith. And then next, back on November ninth, I had the opportunity to participate in the Zero Prostate Cancer Run Walk, sponsored by Alliance Urology and Cone Health. So many men are afflicted with or may die from prostate cancer, and this was a wonderful event, so I'll say to the men, make sure you get tested, get your D R E, monitor your P S A, and just don't forget, it's not just for you, it's also for your loved ones. And then last, November is Movember month, which is a combination, it's also about men's health. It's Movember is mustache and November, just to keep focus on men's health in our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, and I forgot one thing. Friday, we did attend a ribbon cutting, Mary Kay, Hugh, Tammy, in her district, for Civic Credit Union. I am on the Advisory Board of Civic Credit Union. It is for local government employees. I have been a local government member with Civic, well, it's, it's local government, but it's gonna become, or has become Civic Credit Union, and so it's the local part of this. Well, it was paired with state employees, but honestly, you can't be a member of state employees, so this is a way for our local employees to, and our city manager is there. Oh, I'm so sorry, didn't know to forget you, but it's a way for our local employees to have a banking relationship with a credit union, and so hopefully, we'll be able to introduce all our employees to that, so we were there for that, so I wanted to bring that up.
Councilwoman, I'll give you the immediate update. Thank you to A C and Larry Davis and Jemaya Waterman. They will be coordinating a meeting to have a discussion with it.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Zach?
Mr. Manager, maybe Ms. McCray, what is the current situation on the South End property, redevelopment property? I was told September, there would be a new contract signed. Has that been signed? 'Cause I would think we would have to vote on it.
Are you speaking of the, the item that was moved from this agenda into December? I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean on Deputy Manager Wilson to give an update. I know we had some discussion about that earlier.
Yeah, was that the Kagan?
One of them's Kagan, one of them's Alexander, and I'm gonna go ahead and let, I'd love to hear what you have to say.
Short answer is we're setting up small group meetings to update council before it comes to your formal agenda for vote.
Does that mean that the agreement is more, is being asked for more than what was agreed to in the past?
I'm not aware of that, and I don't know if we have staff here to speak to that. Noshia, do you have anything? I'll get you an answer on that, but I, I'm not aware of that, but that would be part of the update.
It's, it's, okay, so, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Davis, Ms. McCray, and Ms. Case, and I know Councilwoman Thurm brought this up, a meeting or two, or three, or four ago. We, we got, and I looked in my emails to make sure I was speaking correctly. By the way, to get information and communication, unfortunately, we have to be the ones that constantly ask for it versus getting it. The last time I asked for an update on the Kagan contract, I got an email with the new contract and a cover letter from Hart, I believe, via Russ Kleg. That's September twenty-fifth, we were gonna have a new signed contract, but here it is November nineteenth, and since I got sent, was sent and received a copy of the contract that would have been signed, and now we're setting up small groups in December, something had to be different than was sent to me September twenty-fifth. So it's disappointing, because this is a fifteen-year overnight plan that has been overpromised and not delivered. What about the other side? I know we've overpromised a grocery store. I wanted to attend a meeting. I didn't get a chance to, so can anybody tell me the notes from that meeting, or can you email them to me?
We'll, we'll provide you an update on both, and I would suggest we make that part of the small group discussion as well.
Well, in the, here, and then, you know, that property is in the Business Improvement District. I hate the fact that I have to beg for the last ten years anytime I want information on that site. The fact that there's never been, and I believe four months ago or five months ago, I said, there's not even a for sale sign on either one of those properties. There has been zero marketing. There's, we are, you are taking a piece of property that's extremely valuable, and we are taking a dart, we're trying to, and throwing one dart, and if we get one person on the hook, then that's all we're focused on, and we're doing this property and this neighborhood a complete injustice. It's been what, probably, I remember the ballpark was, was supposed to go there about twenty-five years ago. Remember that? I do. This is, this is a complete disappointment, and if I was the folks that were in the meeting that I was not able to attend, although invited, I would've sat there and agreed with them. So I would appreciate as much information as possible sooner rather than later on that. The second question I would have would be the Regency End Timeline, Mr. Davis. You sent us a document, I think back in August, that said, all R F Ps and staff decisions would be made by November eighth.
We have the Regency R F P is out now. We've extended it. We, we got behind a little bit on, on closing. Closing did take longer than we originally had anticipated, but the R F P is out for Regency redevelopment, and I believe.
So the most recent timeline I have is incorrect. Is that fair?
Yes, the deadline for the R F P responses, I believe, is December, I wanna say ninth. Let me, let me.
We were supposed to make a December, we were supposed to make, council was supposed to make a decision by your recommendation on December third.
Yeah, that was, that was definitely our hope, absolutely.
So did I miss an update on that? Surely we were updated, correct?
I, I don't think I sent you any.
So, no, we weren't updated. Mr. Manager, one of the things that I think every council person stated when we were going through our most recent process was communication. We gotta have communication. I think we hired somebody to help us communicate and, and get, disseminate the information, but, you know, the, these properties, y'all sit here and listen to me complain about the Regency End for two years, you would think you would wanna shut me up. I'm not even gonna ask about John Dimmery Way, so if, if y'all could please update us on the properties, timelines, where we're at, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Zach, on that, South Am, you know, in October, at the Redevelopment Commission, they, the staff, 'cause I was, I could go to those, we got a new sales development agreement for the South Am, and that, that was presented in October at redevelopment.
Is that, so is that different than the one I received September twenty-fifth?
It says, yeah, what it says, and I can pull it up, staff will lead a presentation regarding a new sales development agreement for the South Am block. I'll go down here and find it.
Okay, so I think we recognize that we need better communication and an updated, updated information at this point. And the point about the sign is a, is an important one, 'cause I think we all agreed that there should at least be a sign over on that property. Mary Kay?
Little hard to go after all of that. So first, welcome to Eric Chilton. Welcome. I was, it was in my notes to say that, so, anyway. Also, wanna give condolences to the Childs family. I, I knew Mr. Childs, and he was just a lovely man. Quite a few things have happened over the last couple of weeks, but I will try to be brief. Last week, I went to Second Harvest Food Bank meeting and reported, wanted to report back that for food insecurity, the zip codes that are in the most need are two seven four oh five, two seven four oh six, and two seven four oh seven. So those are the most food insecure zip codes in the city of Greensboro. Nope, none of it shot, got Tammy's, yeah. So just wanted to say that is from the most recent statistics, so I wanted to report what that came up. Veterans Day activities, and thank you, Zach. I think you're the one who got the Veterans Day holiday for city employees several years ago. There was the parade on Saturday. On Sunday, there was the event at Country Park at the memorial that had been damaged by the storm, but they had it all fixed up. Thank you, Parks and Rec and whoever else assisted with that. On Monday was the event at the Triad Park. I know the mayor was in attendance at that also. I know that there have been several, several other things. We kicked off Safe Streets Week. I spoke and the mayor spoke on that, on reducing vehicular speeds. There was the Day of Remembrance Bike Ride, and thanks to the M P O staff and G D O T for all of that. Parks and Rec opened the Adaptive Trail at Keely Park. I was there with Dr. Wells. Thank you, Noshia, Phil Fleschman, and that department, of course. The Family Justice Center had their nationally recognized conference in Greensboro, the Corey Center. I know Mrs. Thurm was there as well with the Hope Alliance, so they have paved the way, as you all know, that is the one collaboration with the county that has been very successful over the years, attending to domestic violence. Unfortunately, after COVID, there has been a major rise in domestic violence, and everyone's trying to get a handle on that. Let's see, of course, the Greensboro Civic Credit Union. Thank you, Zach, for inviting us to the ice skating opening down in LeBauer Park. And then I had a question, so I'm curious, because I'm getting a lot of phone calls and texts and information, and part of that has to do with Randleman Road, some Battleground, some Gate City Boulevard, but there seems to be an overabundance of certain types of, of businesses, for instance, whether it's vape shops. Remember, it was mattress shops for a while. It was all different kinds of shops that people are saying, well, there's twenty-two in a one-mile radius, or all of these things, and I wanted to ask Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, I know that we cannot govern what type of businesses are run as long as it's not with the alcohol. I know A B C laws say that they can't be within a thousand feet of a school or a daycare center, but is there anything or anything we can do to try to mitigate this, that, you know, there's just so many of one type of business in like a, a three-block area, or, you know, especially the ones like vape shops and, and cannabis hemp shops and things like that, not that any of them are doing anything wrong, but it seems to be just an overload in certain areas.
You are very right. It is a challenge to restrict business types, but in talking with the, the city attorney, we can look at it from a zoning perspective and try to identify some ways to address.
But it's possible to do it that way, but I don't think that's gonna really be satisfying to your objective. It, it, if we knew in advance that an area, you know, might become overpopulated, then you might include this as kind of a zoning strategy, but, um, once they are there, properly zoned, I don't, that's not something you can do. You can use enforcement efforts to make sure that they're not working with underage people or otherwise violating the law.
Right.
But, you know, it's interesting that clustered businesses is not unusual. Car repair places tend to be in certain areas.
Right.
Bars and restaurants tend to be clustered. It's, sometimes it's a good thing, sometimes it's not a good thing, and I get that you think that it's not a good thing, and I tend to agree with you. I'll think about it, and if we can figure out a way to try to get them to disperse in some ways, or anticipate it in some ways, maybe we can.
And I know we can't really govern that, but it just seems to be, you know, for, for the longest, it was all the tire shops on East Market Street or in, in East Greensboro, that, you know, and then, you know, not putting anyone's business down, I'm not trying to do that, but it seems like those clusters are, are just overbearing. I do know that a business model in the past has been have a fast food restaurant on every corner, you know, people would have a selection, but now you're getting where it's the same kind of business on every corner, and it's just a little overbearing. I think there's some of the neighborhoods, yeah.
I'd like to regulate convenience stores.
Well, no. That's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem?
Saturday, you and I were at Charlotte Baptist Church for the installation of their new pastor, a young man from Virginia, and I spoke on behalf of the council welcoming him to Greensboro. And I spoke on behalf of the council, welcoming him to Greensboro. Very nice event, and also, Mr. Davis told them that if they had projects that they needed help with, we would be open to looking at that. The history of Shallow is, is very rich in, in terms of what they have done. So they may very well want some help with something, I don't know. That's, that's it for me. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Dr. Wells?
Well, I'd like to report that we have another treasure in District 2. On, on Sunday afternoon, we opened the Adaptive Mountain Bike Trail. It's a two-mile trail, and it's for, it's inclusive. For anyone with disabilities can use it. And we saw some of those expensive bikes that they use, because they're specifically designed for, for the individuals. But it's the first in our system, and it just sets our parks and rec apart. And we've done two new ribbon cuttings just in the last month, and then Saturday, we'll do the third. But want to comment, commend the Parks and Rec Commission, and Mary Kay was there, and two of the commissioners. So I'm just proud that we have that. That's at Keely Park. And if you haven't been to Keely Park, it is one of a kind, because it is all-inclusive. So children can go there, and they say it's, carries out the theme, if you build a park for everyone, then anyone can come to play. So it's a part of the plan to play, plan that the Parks and Rec have. So we're thankful for another jewel.
Mrs. Thurm?
Well, I think others have kind of gone down the list of, of things that we've been to, et cetera, in the past couple of weeks. I do want to mention that tomorrow is the Transgender Day of Remembrance, and we will be having a Day of Remembrance celebration on the front steps of MMOB tomorrow. Starts at 5:15. It's quite a moving ceremony when we call out the names of those that have been killed, those transgender folks that have been killed just because of who they are and how they present. It's an important event, and I'm glad every year since the commission has started, this event has grown and had better attendance. And if you're available, you're welcome to attend, and we would appreciate your attendance.
Mrs. Hoffman?
You know, every, every month after I attend and participate in our local government commission meeting in Raleigh, I return home, and I think I've said this before, with a grateful heart that we live in a city where we take our financial responsibility for the city very seriously and are very prudent in terms of how we manage the city. So I appreciate council support on that. And of course, we couldn't do it without, really, without, without our staff that, that keeps us on track with all of that. So I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate Action Greensboro for receiving the Best Communication Strategy in Economic Development about two weeks ago at the 2024 City Nation Place Awards held in London. And they, they were up against the state of Michigan, Estonia, Copenhagen, and Moldova. And they won that recognition for the Boomerang Project, which has been really very successful. There have been 85 families welcomed back to the city of Greensboro, more than 2300, 23,000 people engaged in digital content, and they have fielded over 200 inquiries. They had 4,500 mentions in local and national media, and we have seen the impact that Action Greensboro has on the city of Greensboro. So I want to congratulate, congratulate Action Greensboro and Cecilia Thompson for the great work that they do, and thank the deputy city manager for being present at those awards on behalf of the city of Greensboro. But it is, it is a huge international recognition, and I do want to say thank you so much for the great work that they do every day. Mr. City Manager?
Nothing for me.
Mr. City Attorney?
I do have one thing that I'd like to get approval for. During A&amp;T's homecoming, there was an incident involving a tow company, CAT Towing, that we'd like to bring a civil action against them.
I move it. Whatever.
Could I just finish one?
No, you don't have.
For the public, because I need your authority to actively bring a lawsuit. We have to defend the city, but to bring an action, I need your approval.
Absolutely. All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? I think that's great, and I believe that you've also been in contact with the Attorney General's Office. So, you know, what, what happened that weekend is really bad, but it also goes on every single weekend, just not to the scale that it did during the homecoming. So yes, thank you for, for following through on that.
But I, but I think this was really twofold, is that people were out there taking people's money, putting them under the assumption that they were parking in a place that was sanctioned by us, and then coming right along and scooping a car right up, and then people having to pay 400 to a thousand dollars in cash.
Yeah.
So I have people's receipts of where they paid to get their cars back. So, but people think it was us. So allegedly, supposedly, exactly, but thank you for.
Second, all in favor?